Board of Supervisors meeting, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America, in free public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We will begin with announcements and presentations. Number one, Birdtown presentation with Marla Miller, President of the Birdtown, Pennsylvania Organization. Is she here? Oh, okay. Okay, very good, we'll just move on and slot her in later. The next thing is warehouse conditions proposal by Mr. Clarence Boucher.
Hear that?
Thank you, I'm Clarence Boucher, 15 Warwick Circle in Southfield Crossing. I'm giving a presentation for amendments to the zoning ordinance proposing conditions to add to the warehousing piece of that. This is an overview for the public, you each already have the written proposals in front of you, but I want to give them an idea of what I'm going to discuss to generate questions in particular, and I would ask that this proposal and the presentations be added to the minutes. And the staff has had a chance to preview this, although pretty much without comments, that'll probably come later. Next, oh, hold on a second. We weren't quite ready for this yet. Bring up what you can. To make it easier to view, I actually had some animation, which we may or may not get. All right, go to the next slide, we'll wing it, do the best I can. Okay, bottom line, what I'm asking for is that the township review and adopt the additional conditions of warehousing and wholesale trade establishments I'm going to propose. As background, just a reminder that we, the supervisors' last meeting did change the zoning ordinance for warehousing from permitted by right to conditional use, and I think that was a very good idea, a very good move on your part, but to do that, we had to get it done that night, and it didn't allow you to entertain additional conditions, which I do think need to be done in order to better protect the residents. So, the proposals I'm about to offer up are best practices from our own zoning ordinance, from other townships, and from model ordinances that I've read. Each proposal changes or enhances only existing zoning ordinance text, and this is really important, because one of the things I learned with the Woodlands Buffer Yard condition is that trying to actually introduce text into the zoning ordinance is difficult and contentious. So, in this case, all I'm doing is I am modifying what's already in there, or enhancing it with additional ideas, or clarifying some of the thoughts in there. Next. The first condition is setback distance from sensitive areas, and sensitive areas are basically residence, schools, daycare, parks, libraries, medical facilities, and places of worship. The change is from 200 foot to 500 foot within the warehousing section of the ordinance, and the reason being, this is very similar to the 500 foot setback you have for droplots, which you adopted as zoning ordinance 2023-04, and quite frankly, droplots aren't nearly as intensive, or have as much impact on the community and residents as warehousing does, especially modern warehousing, as large and as active as they become. So, if we're going to put 500 foot setbacks for droplots, it really only makes sense that we also do it for warehousing. And the advantage, okay, the advantage is that we can fill the space with woodlands, and if we actually had the animation up there, it would fill in with that 500 foot. This is an example currently under consideration in the township of where a droplot is actually going to be set back 500 feet from the nearby residential. So, this certainly can be done, has been done, and I think should be done with warehousing. If we fill it in with the woodlands, that will also add an additional buffer beyond distance to include protection against noise, light, sight, and air pollution, and this 500 foot buffer is an idea that comes out of the Penn Future Model Warehouse Ordinance, but we actually see it already in place in some of the other townships within Pennsylvania. Next. The second conditions is hours of operation, where I recommend that we establish business hours from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Now, I already know that there's going to be pushback on this because of interstate commerce exceptions. The federal and state have rules that say you cannot limit it, and that's right. So, what this condition really does is establishes an enforcement measure whereby if there is excessive noise, or excessive operations that occur during those hours, an officer of the township can go in and take a look at the logs and confirm that, in fact, yes, that was interstate commerce, or maybe was intrastate commerce and shouldn't have been done, and if the latter, now we have data to work with the developer in order to have some kind of mitigation, in order to reduce whatever the various disturbances were that were reported, in order to get to that point. The third warehouse condition is noise limits, and I'm recommending here 50 decibels from 9:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. hours of sleep, and 65 decibels during the day. The advantage of this is, it is quantitative, which means you can measure it, which means it's enforceable, if you need it. 50 decibels is the maximum that's recommended for sleep, and to go beyond that, you're going to start disturbing some people's sleep, and we shouldn't be doing that. This particular noise recommendation comes from the Clean Air Board of Central Pennsylvania's Model Ordinance, and also from the New Jersey Community Model Noise Ordinance. Now, I know it's New Jersey, and that's way off to the east, but my Pennsylvania sound consultant says that this is really truly a standard to follow, because it is well-defined, it is quantitative, and it has withheld, withstood several court challenges to remain enforceable, and so that's what he recommends that we use, and that's where I pulled this particular condition from. The fourth condition is air pollution, and kind of like interstate commerce, this is also highly regulated by federal and state regulations, so I'm not going to say we need to establish any pollution standards here, but what I do recommend is that we monitor the type of air pollution that comes specifically from warehouses and diesel trucks, and that would be the Particulate Matter 2.5, oh, sorry, next one. Particulate Matter 2.5, the volatile organic compounds and nitrogen oxides, all of which are unhealthy for human beings. If we monitor this, we again build up a database where if we see that there is a large amount of pollution all of a sudden coming in, we can engage with the developer, or I'm sorry, with the operator, and quite frankly, at least two to three of these are site-specific, only the PM 2.5 tends to be more area and site-specific, and we can work with them then to mitigate that particular problem, but without the data, we can't do it, which is why this needs to be a condition as well. The fifth condition is against glare and light. This would prevent spillover of light to exceed .1 horizontal foot candles, which is something I had to learn, but a foot candle is nothing more than the brightness of a candle, one foot in front of your face. So, .1 would be a foot, would be a candle 10 feet away at that brightness. Frankly, that's not a very difficult standard to reach, but it is a useful one, and I know Supervisor Lenker, for instance, takes a, asks a lot of questions about light, especially when it's near residential areas coming from an industrial or commercial site. And the final one would be traffic studies, and what I'm recommending is the township commissions traffic studies, but the developer pays for them, and like all of the other proposals that I have here, none of this is original to me, and this one in particular comes from the board itself. On several occasions, I've heard the board talk about the possibility of making, of the township picking the actual traffic engineer, and having the developer pay for it, and at least in October 2024, you asked the staff to make a recommendation on that. I haven't heard what the recommendation is, but this would be a great place to insert it into the, into the zoning ordinance as frankly really needed. It would, it would build a lot of trust in the residents, in the development process that we've been going through, especially at the Trindles Springs Trade Center, where we saw questionable results coming out of the developer. Next. So, my bottom line is I'm going to ask the supervisors to make a decision on how to proceed, I recommend that you take this, send it to the staff for the recommendations. I'm willing to work with the staff, I'm willing to talk to the planning commission or any of your committees about this in order to get a better understanding of it. I understand that what may come of this would be modifications, and of course, they're the experts, I've just been reading up on this, certainly would listen to any of the modifications, recommendations they have, but I do believe a decision needs to be made, and frankly, I believe all six of these are certainly worthy of being in the zoning ordinance. So, with that, is there any questions I can answer for you?
Have you met with staff?
Yes, I've talked to them once already about these, they're familiar with it, they didn't have any, didn't have a lot of comments, I think pretty much waiting to hear from you, to come back to them, they didn't want to commit. And...
Little question, we were told before by our previous solicitor that the only way we could be involved in a traffic study would be if we would go get our own independent one at our expense to either corroborate or refute the one that they present, is that legal? We were told it was not legal to ask, you know, say, we want an independent person, is that so?
You'd have to get your own, your own traffic study separately, yep.
That was factual.
That's, that's correct.
Okay, all right.
As I said in that one, I know you discussed it in the past, I hadn't heard what the result was.
We brought, years ago, I think Nancy and I both brought that forward because of the fact that it always seemed like the traffic study always benefited the developer as far as the counts, where the traffic would go, and we questioned our solicitor, and he came back and said, look, we can't be involved, like, they, they get their own, we have to pay at the township's expense, and, you know, he, he kind of let us believe, you have a hard time usually getting someone to refute the other one, because if the shoe's on the other foot, then people tend to reciprocate.
There are five other proposals, though, I'm leaving up to you guys to decide how to proceed.
No, but, I mean, I think you brought up some points that need to be thought about.
Hey, Clarence, do you remember Joe Ricky on Planning Commission?
Yes.
There was a lengthy discussion about traffic study, I guess, and I'm not, they talked about it, talked about it, but nothing was ever written in stone, I guess, and then Joe passed away, but I know they were talking about traffic studies at length. You know, I looked at your, all your things here, and we're about 20 years too late on some things.
Well, I, I agree, but the problem is, I don't want someone 20 years from now saying the same thing.
Right, yeah.
Which is why we need to address it now.
But...
Yeah, I'll just, the one thing I will say, number five, we already have a .1 horizontal foot candle in the, in the Saldau that all plans have to meet, so that's, that's standard already in Saldau.
Yeah, I do have a comment, years ago, you could come from Perry County and look down on Cumberland Valley here, and it was clear and everything, and you, you do that today, and you can see all the smog stuff from all the trucks and everything, so I, I would like to see something done with the air pollution, so.
Well, Sean, legally, like, with setbacks, that's totally in our discretion, or is there some footprint that we have to follow, or template that it can't exceed, because Tom's speaking, like?
Yeah, I mean setbacks generally speaking are in your discretion, I mean, you can't create setbacks that make it impossible to use the property.
That was my concern, because if you made like 1,000 foot setback, most properties would be, you know, unrealistic, or seven feet, like, is that, does that come down to the point that it's at the discretion, like, the court will end up either ruling it's excessive, if it's challenged?
It's, I think that this, what you'd be faced with is, depending on the circumstances of the property, whether you've, you've basically taken so much of the property by that setback that, that the property's effectively unusable, and you'd have a, you'd have a takings claim.
Okay.
But, but the reason I picked the 500 feet was, first off, it's already in our zoning ordinance, we've already done it before, and it's being done in other townships as well.
I understand, we, we ran into the issue, and I go back with the, kind of, the entrance ways to development, but, you know, we're not to go into it, or be in a floodway, and when it was challenged in our zoning hearing board, they agreed with what we had in our ordinance, they appealed to Cumberland County Court, the judge said, eh, not an issue, and once that occurred, that became, you know, it needed to be removed out of our ordinance, it was illegal at that point, because the judge ruled against it, so what I thought was a noble cause, and it made sense, a judge did not have a problem with, so here we were, you know, and I, to me, you're better off if you get a little bit less out of it, and you know it's not, it's going to be held up in a challenge, you're better off than putting something restrictive in, the first person comes in, you know, challenges it, and then it's, it's deemed, you know, to be illegal, so.
But, but there is precedent here.
Yeah, we have to look at the...
I understand, and that, that's why this all comes through you guys, because you got to balance it all.
Yeah.
But I'm here to present you some ideas and see where you go with them.
No, I appreciate it.
Laura, did you have anything?
I, I remember you talked about this before, and, and where they're going to put those trailers in.
The cost road?
Yeah, that was one of the things, and I was concerned about the lighting and everything, because there's people that live across the road and everything, and I think that's very important, because, you know, you're going to have, have them dropping trucks and stuff like that, and you got the noise and everything else, and that's what I was trying to get at whenever we were talking about that, you know, how it was going to interfere with the residents and stuff, have you talked to the residents and everything, and they didn't do that, so.
And, and that's what this was based on, really, that, that whole thought process to try to prevent that and protect the residents a bit more.
Yeah, and I think you brought up the ECP that I talked about and stuff, yeah.
There is a whole lot of things, and there's probably more I'd want to put in here, but I figured I'd go with the most important ones and keep it focused.
Well, thank you for doing it.
Yes, thank you, Clarence, I think at this point, what would you have us do? We don't, we're not going to vote on that.
Like, you know, forward that on to us, if you'd like us to provide commentary to what was here, we'll, we'll come back in June with staff's perspective on what was brought up, if that works for you.
Would you like to run this by the planning commission, too?
Not a bad idea.
Sounds good.
You can make that happen, Mr. Palmer?
We can, just, we'll get it on the agenda.
Okay, very good, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I think staff should review first, so they can put comments for the planning commission to see.
Thank you, yes.
And if, if the timing is bad, because the planning commission's coming pretty soon.
Yeah, maybe, it may be a month later in the planning.
But I don't want to delay this too long either, as we know, these things are popping up all the time, sooner we get this in, the better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clarence.
Yeah, so now I guess Marla Miller is here from Birdtown, she flew in on a...
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Sorry, I had...
No, that's okay.
Seven o'clock on my agenda, so I apologize.
Thought you couldn't...
Can you hear okay? Am I okay with this? Okay. So, I'm here tonight about Birdtown, congratulations, that's pretty exciting.
Thank you.
Just a quick run-through on the slides, and you can flip to the next one, our mission's really just to work with municipalities like yourselves and surrounding area, and we look at birds, of course, but birds encompass more than that, we're looking at wildlife, and of course, human beings as well, so thank you again for allowing me to speak tonight. Birdtown has been active for 14 years, we are now have 85, you are number 80, so five have joined since you, they started primarily in the southeast Pennsylvania, down around Abington and Doylestown, that area, lot now in the western, and then here in central PA, they do fall under the umbrella of the Pennsylvania Audubon Council, so it is a 501(c)(3). Just so you know, the folks that are in Birdtown, no one takes a salary, it is all volunteer work, and we are now in 15 counties. So, these are the 85 Birdtowns in the 15 counties, you will notice Cumberland has quite a few now, and Harrisburg joined, which is Dauphin, and if you flip to the next side, you can see, they say Cumberland, of course, the city of Harrisburg is Dauphin, but we have Camp Hill, Carlisle, Mechanicsburg, Monroe, Upper Allen, Silver Springs, South Middleton in Cumberland, and then, of course, the city of Harrisburg in Dauphin County, so we're excited to have our network here where we can share ideas and come together. The Audubon Council, again, is a 501(c)(3), and they are part of the National Audubon Society, and so that's who we go under, and we are working in conjunction with Audubon, our local chapter is Appalachian Audubon, which you will see soon. So, why birds, you know, birdies, birds eat 400 to 500 million tons of insects per year, we like that part, of course, crows, vultures, things like that, you know, scavengers, wheat, the dead bodies, things like that, which is really important, they disperse seeds or pollinators in some regards, and then, of course, some, like the owls, et cetera, keep control over those rodents, which is good. A lot of us think they bring joy, a lot of bird watchers, you can see down there, there's over 96 million bird watchers, and they bring in about $41 billion of income, so it's important in that regard, they also are a good indicator of the health of the environment, you know, you heard the canary in a coal mine, it's kind of the same way with our environment as well. Why do they need our help? 2.9 billion birds are gone since 1970, I'm old, so I was alive then, and, you know, about nine years old, and it's sad that since 70, you've had that many, why do they, why are we losing so many? And you flip again, the major threats really are loss of habitation, you know, we have developments, I live in one, too, you know, the, the farms have no more rows of, you know, the, the tree lines, things like that, cats are big, if you have feral cats, you know, they kill about 2.4 billion a year, window collisions in Harrisburg, there's a bird-safe Harrisburg, they're trying to get more of the dots and things on the windows to prevent some of that, because birds fly right into them, especially during migration season, pesticides and some invasive species, and then, of course, plastics. So, Birdtown really addresses things in six different ways, engagement, education, encouragement, support, inspiration, of course, and then just prompting awareness, promoting awareness and education with that. So, you can many different things, and that's one of the reasons why I like this program so much, it includes native plants, it includes riparian buffers and water stream and all the different things, it encompasses everything, it's not just about birds and putting out nesting items, but rather, it does encompass everything in the environment, which is really important, and you can do many different things, every different municipality will have a different priorities, and that's great, there's all kinds of things that you can do, whatever fits within your needs. So, Birdtown, you know, we provide a statewide structure, and you start out with green, you can go up the ladder, and Clint and his team knows all about this, but there's a framework to do things, we also want to train people, there are at least four different training events that we have, sometimes five, there's one on native plants, and, and there was one on invasives, there was one on bluebirds, so things like that, and more opportunities to join together and learn from each other, we had a clutch meeting last Saturday, where that whole group that we just had up on the thing shared ideas on what they're doing in their municipalities. There is a Birdtown site, all of you can join, you can see the site at least, you know, and become involved with it, there are workshops, meetings, and then there's a back page for the folks that are actually Birdtown committee members. And they're also aired some publications, the flyer is for those that are Birdtown leaders, but the bird beat, anyone in the room can join and learn more about, it's just education on different things, again, plants, water, birds, all those kind of things. And this is Appalachian, is our Appalachian Audubon Society, is this area, it encompasses most of Cumberland County, kind of down towards, you know, shippen, not too late to Schipensburg, it's about Newville's where it stops, right in there, we do have a tiny bit of Lancaster, Elizabeth Town, Dauphin, for the most part, except for Hershey, for some reason, they did it that way, and then we have Perry County, and so, and a little bit of York-Dillsburg, so it's kind of that central area, we have meetings every month from September through May, and everyone's always, the public's always invited to come, and there also are field trips and things like that that you can leverage upon. And these are the five strategies, just municipal actions, which we, you know, are certainly working with you on, school districts, community and individual engagement, organizations and partnerships, and then advocacy, so just trying to look at the five different areas, that's where the five strategy areas will be, so that you can move up into different levels, which is on the next slide. These are the fear tour programs, and again, you can stay at that level, you can go up, there's no race, there's no requirements, it's just making people to be mindful, and again, you choose the areas that work best within your, your particular municipality. And again, there's strategies and goals, habitat enhancement, and addressing the threats to birds, the primary ones, like a city like Harrisburg probably has more about, you know, trash cleanup and things like that, that may not be as important for yours, every, every municipality is different, and I like it because there are so many themes and areas, and even things you can put down, even if it's not listed. The welcome package, you know, I think Clint's already gotten, and Tyler have gotten it already, but tonight, there are things that I brought, that have the Birdtowns, which you can put up in your municipality, wherever you want, sorry, this way, for everyone that wants it, so there'll be two of those given to you as part of the programming, and then the other things, back pages, things, there's ordinance, there's also all kinds of things, if you ever need any help, we have it for all those areas, like, you know, invasive species, or native plants, or something, there's ordinances out there that we've collected, and you can certainly leverage upon them. And congratulations again, number 80, so we really appreciate it, we appreciate all of Clint's, your help, I mean, you did an amazing job, that committee did an amazing job, everyone here has been so helpful, Tyler as well, so thank you again, thank you for allowing me to present, and we do appreciate it, and we enjoy working with you, and please, looking, work forward to working with you in the future, so thank you.
I do have a question. In Perry County, you get hummingbirds, why don't you get them here?
There are some around, actually.
I haven't seen many.
Surprisingly, I'm Upper Allen, where we actually, Cliff, we went on a walk there, they get a lot of hummingbirds and trout room, which is one of Audubons, you do have to put things out, and you do have to have certain plants that have those... You do have to put things out and you do have to have certain plants that have those kind of deeper, you know, cardinal flowers, things like that. Um, but they plant quite a few. It's a very nature oriented uh, place at Trout Run. It's in Upper Allen Township. And because it's just natural, hummingbirds actually come there pretty much in August. It's pretty, pretty phenomenal. We only get the one type in this area though, um, you know, the ruby threaded hummingbird, but they are around. Um, and actually, an individual in uh, bans them. I think she's banned two thousand of them in this area. That's one of her things. I, you know, the tiny bandit's like, you know, a very small thing around that leg, but they track them and it's pretty remarkable. Comes through a lot. Uh, they've they've had the same ones a number of years.
I know. We put up feeders uh, a couple of years ago. Haven't seen any.
Yeah, I mean, it just takes time. They look for things. They look for uh, you know, certain flowers, certain types of things. It might attract them more, but I understand.
Too many warehouses.
That could be. I I won't go there. Any other questions, though? We do have this. If anyone wants to be, you know, if you would like to participate in the picture, we just do a quick picture. If not, we'll go with the other team. It's up to you.
Do we want to, so you want, you want to take a picture of the board? Is that what you?
Do you want to do it? Yeah, I mean, if you can, that would be great. We like it. We like it for our history books. Plus you guys can use it for your newsletter or whatever you like.
Did I get the members of the conservation and preservation committee there here to come up with pictures?
Other reason for Scott to like.
Thank you again for coming. Next, uh, Mr. Palmer, uh, the state of. The Union Township Projects and Finance.
We'll be quick here because we've got a pretty big agenda. Um, just so everybody knows, this goes on the uh, website tomorrow. So if you have anything or any questions, if you don't have them tonight, you can go on the website and certainly reach out. Um, here we are year to date. Um, just want to again compliment staff on doing a great job on the um, on the expenses so far this year. We're trending uh, exactly where we'd want to be at thirty-three percent of the year. Our expenses are at twenty-six. Again, a a big tribute to the staff. Go ahead. Um, I brought this up last time and it was um, I'll have to come up with a better color unless you turn the lights out. But these are all the projects that are going on in the township and the status that we have in the township. I think one thing I mentioned last time is we have a tunnel that's going to go across the Carlisle Pike. That tunnel's been delayed now to twenty twenty-seven. So that's uh, it's an exciting venture, but it's been delayed now another year, so it's going to be twenty twenty-seven. Good, Scott, thanks. Um, these are the grants that we've talked about before. Um, I think some of you know, there's um, some budgetary issues going on between um, right now up at Harrisburg. Um, most of these grants here announcements will happen probably late summer into early fall. So um, we're in play. Um, we've received actually actually some uh, communication on two of them. To state that they've gone through the first um, vetting of the grant that's been submitted, which is a good thing as opposed to not hearing from them. So um, we'll just say it's um, in the right motion. Thanks. Um, one day I just want to mention, you're going to hear a lot of us talk um, as we go through the next six or seven months. Stormwater and the stormwater ordinance, um, just how stormwater in general is viewed. And how how we're starting to um, really revisit our stormwater ordinance, which is really predicated on DEP looking to rewrite the ordinance. And we're having to follow that. Um, just as we look at our stormwater. Um, we are, we are going to go through a major transformation in the early twenty twenty-six. And how we calculate and how those permits come in, whether they're a minor or a major. Uh, more details we'll show you as we go along the next couple of months. Thanks. Couple of big projects that are coming up. Just want to let everybody know, we'll get the exact dates on the website. Um, this is uh, this is due to the Costco project. One fourteen in Carlisle Pike sometime in late June. They're going to be doing night work at from six P to six A. Um, there'll be some lane restrictions, so they'll be working at the nighttime in a very, very busy quarter. Um, Hemp Boulevard sometime late June. Um, we're going to be bringing to the board that we'll have to close that to do um, some additional renovations on Hemp Boulevard. Um, we knew that was coming, but we've, looks like we're getting pretty close on when that's going to happen. And then after Hemp is done, they're going to be doing some upgrades and renovations on one fourteen in Texaco. We also will get those dates out so that everybody knows. So pretty, three pretty significant projects um, with Costco coming. That was required for them to make enhancements. Wanted to show this to everybody. Um, they have actually started to put walls up at Costco. I don't know if anybody's driven by. Um, those are just some pictures. Um, so I just wanted to take them today. Um. They will tell you um, this weather has not been easy to work in. Um, they've run into a lot of uh, a lot of challenges, so. But they've gotten some foundations, some walls and stormwater basins up already. Go ahead. Want to thank uh, the group that put these out. This was um, this was out the entire Memorial Day weekend, and I want to say thank you to the. Uh, to the group that that put these out for the township. They do that every year. So it's a big thank you. I took this picture. Uh, could you just turn that light off? I don't, I want to just appreciate this picture. This picture was taken actually on Sunday night. I don't know if you know that the Big Thirty-three game was played at Cumberland Valley. This was uh, during where Pennsylvania plays the state of Maryland for the best of the best. Um, I thought that sky was one of the, one of the most amazing pictures you'll ever see. It was a great crowd. I would say there was a good five to six thousand people that watched that game in May to watch a high school football game. And these are the best of the best in the country that you'll see candidly on paper, uh, excuse me, on the television um, on Saturdays. So it's really a great event and really, really well run by the Big Thirty-three in the Cumberland Valley School District. They did a really great job with it. So, thanks Scott. And lastly, um, some of the big projects, or excuse me, some of the events coming up. We have Chill at the Mill down at Used to Mill. That's going to happen on the, on the sixth of June. And then we have our Veterans Golf Event that is, that is sold out. I believe so, right Tyler? Close? Pretty close. Yeah. So um, real excited and then we'll have our national night out and then we'll be back at the mill for another music and then the events that we have coming. Um, I just wanted to be quick just to give you an update. Again, I want to thank staff. Um, for doing a great job in the expenses. You'll see we're at twenty-six percent of the um, expenses with thirty-three percent of the year. So just want to say thank you again to staff. Thanks.
Thank you, Barry. Next on the agenda is public comment. Anybody have anything?
Microphone. Speak.
Hi there. Barbara Martin, one oh seven Brook Meadow. I had sent a letter to you all on May twelfth. If you don't have it, I have printouts.
We have it.
Anybody over there want one? You have it. If anybody else wants. Uh, okay. Uh, for anyone online and for everyone else, I would like to formally request that tractor trailer traffic be restricted on Mulberry Drive from the intersection red light at Hoagstown Road, one fourteen to the intersection at Pleasant View Drive. Uh, my husband attended a Board of Supervisors meeting November fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, made a similar request. I was not at that meeting, but based on the minutes, I don't believe any motion or any action was taken. Um, while it was not in the minutes, my conversation with my husband, uh, said that Supervisor Lanker mentioned that this part of Mulberry was initially developed to help businesses, that are the ones that are further out on Mulberry past the park. Um, and. My point is that may have been the purpose why it was started, but that all the the. Since boards of supervisors, whoever those resident, the uh, elected officials were, have now made that corridor almost completely residential, and it also has a walking and biking path on it. Um, this uh, this dedicated trail has pedestrians, joggers, bicyclists daily. Um, the only non-residential building in the quarter that I'm talking about is an office for the Susquehanna Conference of the United Methodist Church. So they do not have tractor trailers. Um, but I have two maps. Uh. So you can see the. The area that I'm requesting no traffic is, sorry, is on the one before this. And that length of road. Is point nine miles. And then the, then the trucks alternately. On the next map, if they go the other way, it's one point five miles. So it's point six mile difference for those trucks that would be traveling. I did my own very unofficial traffic study. And so I just randomly picked three days and I drove both routes. Um, Monday, five fifteen PM, Tuesday, ten thirty AM, Friday, six forty-five PM. That was thirty-eight seconds, thirty-six seconds and twenty-four seconds longer to drive the longer route. To be fair, the, I drove. Two one way and one the other way. One time that I went out that I was making the left onto one fourteen. Um, I think that was the. I think it was a Monday, five fifteen. I can't promise you that. And I will tell you, I happened to get lucky. I did not wait long to make my left. I'm sure that would not always be the case. Um, so also, these times also, the times that I talked about, don't take into uh, consideration that I was driving a car. And so, and I was trying to drive the speed limit as much as I could to get an accurate count. But the trucks, when they drive the shorter route, have to drive very slowly around three ninety-degree turns. So their times may actually, may actually be almost equal, perhaps. So um, I don't know what the next steps are. If this is something that I bring straight to you, if I have to go to a planning commission, or if I have to get signatures, or what the next step is, but. I'd appreciate your consideration.
Um, I want to give you a background. Historically, at one time Pleasant View was no trucks up to. Believe like the late nineties, early two thousands. And. I know this for a fact because I grew up here. That. Corridor you're talking about up to Pleasant View at one time, there was pretty much the two farmhouses. And the houses at the corner of one fourteen and that was it.
Hmm.
Pleasant View had more houses. They lifted the no truck restriction at Pleasant View. And I totally agree with you. If there was a a traffic signal because of the turns. I totally agree with you that it would be beneficial to run the trucks out there because they don't have to travel the winding road. However, out at one fourteen, and I've seen it because I travel out a fair amount. There's been, especially rush hour, traffic can queue because they have trouble pulling out and it's quite dangerous. And I've seen truckers, I don't know how long they were waiting there, make decisions that I personally wouldn't make using a truck. My rationale behind this is. One, um, when Morgan was built. At um. The railroad tracks, which is right there at Pleasant View, right beside the, I think it's a Methodist.
Off the other side.
Yeah, it's right behind it. They paid money to have Mulberry Drive improved and it was built to withstand trucks and the old one-lane bridge down at the Deeds Farm at the Run. Was was improved.
Has increased speed in on our little section of Mulberry.
What's that?
But now that it's no longer a one-lane bridge, it's like, you might as well call it a Speedway.
But it's like they they created, you know, like there was. Issues there with it being one way, but they they had improved that bridge. With the understanding that they were ultimately allowed to to utilize that and not use Pleasant View. In hindsight. That was, they probably should have had them. Do a different route there, probably use Pleasant View, but there was houses, more houses at that time.
So I guess my question is, is that in writing? Is it a guarantee for in perpetuity that they get to drive their trucks that way, even though that is entirely residential? I mean, you're saying that that.
Here's my second point. One, we installed a traffic signal there. And and I. My cousin, my cousin was decapitated out here at eighty-one at one fourteen because a tractor trailer pulled out off the ramp before there was a light there. I do not want to see anybody else have that happen, and that happened in nineteen eighty-seven. So like, that's in my mind. If we can utilize this and we have on our radar. The Pleasant View light. We made a choice a few years ago that was one, we were doing the Woods Drive intersection, Mulberry. We had talked about doing that. We run into an issue there. Twenty-five percent of that intersection falls within the. The one at Pleasant View.
Pleasant View and one fourteen.
Falls in the borough of Mechanicsburg. So we would need cooperation out of them. To have them be agreeable either to like twenty-five percent of the cost and. Future maintenance, you know.
For a red light there.
Or, you know, ultimately, we would have to to foot the bill. We elected to utilize the monies because we needed to do Woods Drive and we needed to do one fourteen. They, there was a lot more traffic at that stage there. I totally agree with you. The day comes that we get a traffic signal at Pleasant View. I think that. You take and make it trucks only. It's a straight run in and out. It's direct. But at this stage, I worry about somebody pulling out at that intersection. God forbid.
They do. I mean, the trucks use both, both. What I'm asking is if they would only use that. I I guess what is my next step? Because you're one vote. There's five.
So Dave, if I could just uh, provide some additional details, this is Tyler in the back of the room. Um, so and and I did do a memo to the board after this day come in. I'm not sure if you guys had a chance to review that or not. Um, I'm not going to read it word to word, but i- in summary, you know, June of twenty-three, the board did authorize a traffic study along one fourteen. To study the ancillary roads that connect into one fourteen and the truck um, movability throughout those roads. Um, November nine, November twenty-three, uh, Mr. Martin was here. Um, in December twenty-three, we provided a quick update to the board of how the study was going in that regard. January twenty-four, we provided another update to the board. Um, March twenty-four, we provided another final kind of update to the board. Where what Dave just summarized was talked to at length. Um, and that study did show that Mulberry, that segment that you're talking about from Pleasant View to one fourteen, did warrant a restriction. However, the board felt due to what Dave just explained, it now is not the time to enact that into an ordinance. So therefore, it did not meet, go into the ordinance of twenty-four. Uh, what ordinance was that? Twenty-four dash four. Um, so then in the summer of twenty-four, we installed all the other restrictions around the one fourteen corridor. But that segment did not make the list due to the reasonings that the board has discussed in the past.
I don't think, the board agrees with you. In in theory, but till we get a light at Pleasant View to make it safe for. I'm sure there's people in your neighborhood that comes out of Mechanicsburg. There's a lot of residents that utilize the one fourteen corridor. I don't want to see a truck pull out of there because they wait fifteen minutes. I've seen traffic queue behind them. And people get antsy the longer they have to wait and and something.
Oh, they got antsy because I was driving twenty-five miles an hour.
Yeah, I'm just saying, like, I worry about that aspect of it. That that, it's nothing punitive with anybody that lives along there. I worry about the safety of everybody involved. And that includes the trucks as well, but I do agree Pleasant View is a straight shot. It makes sense. We just have to, and there's already industry on there. But we have to make sure that we give them a safe place to ingress and egress. Onto one fourteen and with a traffic signal being there, that's my, my concern.
And I can understand.
For everybody. It's. Trust me.
Okay.
I wanted to do the light five years ago. We just didn't have the money and I think the board agreed. It would just, we had limited funds.
So if I just came out with a whole bunch of money to put a red light there.
If you hit the lottery and you say, I'll put it in, we'll put it in and you have their trucks.
Isn't the state involved in that as well?
Yeah, and that's the other issue. We had to fight with the state to get the light in at Mulberry. Originally, they told us to take the shrubbery down. They they gave us a song and dance and I I found it hard to believe. And what helped us was one of the people that works in the office for, was either the senator or one of the House of Rep. I happened to call them about something and they asked when the light was going in and I told them, Pendot told us it didn't need a light. Pendot told us it didn't need a light. And then all of a sudden, things went a different.
Yeah, which is crazy because there was accidents there all the.
Oh, yeah, they said it wasn't needed. We, we fight with them over that.
We, we appreciate that red light very much.
But I, I think you'll see, if, if you give us some time here.
Okay.
We, we have the curves at, at uh, State, we have the turn at, at Texaco. It's on our radar. It's just, we, we had to pick our battles and you know, I think things have progressed in that area. It has become a residential. At one time, the only, it was mainly trucks on Mulberry. I remember that day.
Yeah, and, and I would say luckily, there is less tractor trailer trucks now that Hemp is reopened. It was excessive. But it ha, it has diminished, but they are definitely still there. We get the tanker trucks and I guess they're, they're using it as a shortcut, I think, over to Trindal to head down to eighty-one that way.
The one business over the railroad tracks uh, the, has tankered back there on the left right past um, Bridgewater. And they, I think they utilize that. At one time, the, the railroad bridge had a three-ton weight limit and they were forced to go out to Trindal and around, but when the borough put that new bridge in, it opened them to be able to come that way. So there was a lot of things that happened.
Yeah. All right. All right. Well, thank you.
All right.
The squeaky wheel gets the grease. Just keep.
I'll be here.
Thank you for coming. Um, Lana. Good evening.
Hi, I'm Barb with Miller and Sam's Towing.
I'm Sam.
Okay. Clearback in September of last year. The police chief was asked to get our pricing for all the towing companies around. We did all that. That's eight months ago. Okay? Here we are today and we still are. I'm not trying to be mean, but we're still playing around. Okay? Where come May third, the first Saturday of this month, rotation started. The, the chief decided to start the rotation. Okay? With four towing companies, C H, H J, Miller and Sam's, Wheelers. Okay? I don't mean to leave you out. I'm sorry. So on Monday, May fifth, I emailed the chief in and I quote in the email, rumor has it, the rotation started this past Saturday. Were, were we to stop by the police station and pick up the towing application and forms to complete for the background checks and somehow I missed that opportunity? The chief, his response was, and I quote, "The rotation is separate from the policy. No application yet." I don't understand how that's possible when you're going to send towing companies out to accidents when you have not done a background check? So let's go ahead and send them out, not knowing if they are sex offenders, if they are rapists, if they have stolen before or anything like that. There is no application that was ever filled out. No, you have no qualifications of our work comp or certificate of liability insurances, which is a minimum of five hundred thousand dollars according to the resolution that we got that came in late last month. There is also no price check yet. So we're still able to have some of the towing companies price whatever they feel like. So let's go back up to the thirteen, fourteen, seventeen hundred dollars for an accident call. So how is it possible that you're allowing your community? You're taking, no, you're taking their lives by going ahead and allowing the rotation to start without doing background checks or doing anything else that was involved in eight pages of the resolution? I don't understand because on April twenty-third, the board decided to table the decision until June. So all four towing companies had a chance to get all red ducks in a row. I don't, I mean, there's no ETA set up like there was supposed to be set up. So you can take however long you want, an hour to get to an accident while the roads are blocked on a Carlisle Pike on a Friday evening during rush hour or anything like that. Or you can have a towing company allow them to have one of their tow trucks show up at the accident. So it looks like they're on scene, sit there for twenty, twenty-five minutes. And I actually calculated because I was standing in the background. Sit there for twenty-five minutes waiting for a rollback of the same company show up to load the vehicle up during rush hour. That's, that's a major concern when traffic is so busy on a Carlisle Pike, especially now with Seven Brew or Bruce Seven and everything going on there at, at the firehouse. I don't, I thought it was the board's decision to do all this. But you've left the towing companies hanging.
And I don't. That certainly was not our intention. I don't.
Should we start the rotation?
It was started May third.
Can you speak to this?
Yes, at last month's meeting, uh, when Solicitor Schultz advised that we would need till June to get the policy, the ordinance together for you guys. I advised at the end that we were going, we had finally gotten the rotation working on our server through the I T company. And we were going to implement it so that we could iron out any issues for when it goes into effect. These are the same companies we've been using the whole time, so we're not using any different companies. We just went through the rotation. The only company we stopped using was a company who, because of zoning issues, is not eligible to tow in the township. So that had nothing to do with any of this. So yes, we began a rotation to try to see if it will work.
My question would be, if we didn't implement it, why are we excluding him yet till we have everything?
They're being excluded because they're not permitted through zoning to run that type of business in the township. So ordinance or no ordinance, they wouldn't be, we would not use them because they're not authorized to do so.
Okay, so with that said, there is another towing company that is on the list that, that is either classified as agriculture, which was classified a month ago, and then all of a sudden switched to residential, but they're running a towing business out of their property. That is not allowed in Silver Springs Township. So what's good for one is good for the other, which means what's good for the towing company to, if you're going to allow that towing company to work, then go ahead and put Latuca back on because that would only be fair. Yes, it would hurt us. But we're not here to cheat someone.
No, and I appreciate. I mean, that's noble of you.
I, I think Supervisor Lanker and I had an exchange on that last meeting. Our staff's review of the uh, zoning for all the properties is that um, other than the one that the chief referred to, they are all compliant with zoning. That may mean that they were grandfathered in previously. There was one that received a variance by a stopple some years ago by the zoning hearing board. Um, so other than that one that the chief referred to, everybody else is, is compliant with zoning.
I do have a question though. Um, we're not quite there yet, Chris. I- is, is Mr. Latuca planning on being in compliance somehow or not?
He's, he's not going to be able to be.
At all.
Right, so we, we can't, we can't have the police department sending, basically sending towing business to a company that we know is violating a zoning ordinance.
Hey, um, but that other individual they just brought up at one time did a who the residential garage came into the zoning hearing board circumvent. Doning at that time, we're rewarding him for that then.
Once, once there's a zoning hearing board determination that that use is permissible, that use is permissible under the zoning ordinance.
That's not fair because he put that garage chair to dilly-dally with.
Right, I, I'm not here to litigate a case that occurred before I was solicitor and years ago.
The other question I have is, um, what, Chris, what all do you have to iron out yet? Um, just mainly the towing rates, right, to get a standardized basic tow rate? And what classifies as being able to be an add-on charge, right?
Right.
That was what.
I believe that's.
Have, have you had a meeting with everybody to get?
We have everybody's updated information. It's just how to present it to you guys in a way that the last month's meeting, you kind of made a thing of wanting everything as one, not to include X, Y, Z. And that takes away a whole, it makes it much more complicated. We're trying to work through that to present something that makes sense and is doable.
Yeah, what, my concern was people charging like, you know, you call them, there's a phone fee, there's a bill fee. That's ridiculous, charging somebody two, three hundred dollars, you know, because, you know, they had to make a bill. Like, they, they find ways to tack these side charges on. Those days are done, you know?
Until that ordinance is presented and acted on by the board, oh, I'm continuing as I have for the last nine and a half years. It's just for the last twenty-five days, we've added a rotation to try to be a little more fair, which has also been a major gripe of many of the tow companies. And it's going pretty well.
But, but we're required by that, that act I showed you, Act eleven, twelve. We do have to spread it out by law. I mean, we can't, if we have people, we have to be on some sort of.
The act says that if they request somebody and that's, we have a whole separate list. This has been massively time extensive of, I have two charts. Those that we call for accidents, those that we call because somebody says this is who I want. And we have those examples as well. Or those that are totally unrelated. It's down a hill, it's over a fence, it needs craned up, obviously, specialized things. So we are.
You still working on this?
It, it's, the, the chart, while it is a royal pain, is working. It's just.
No, but I mean, the, the cost, because that was one of my biggest hangups, that we set the rate and
Right.
That's what it is. And if they elect to say we can't do it for that, that's no problem. I think we can get two, three companies that will and we'll go from there.
The last time we gave our price was clear back in January. This is about to be June. That's more than enough time to make up the price.
Other thing I'm asking for is to make it fair for everybody to get the same amount of tow job is when you have an accident, you have a two-part accident, you call two tow companies. Then everybody's getting the equal amount. Because we have got two accidents so far in one request. And we've got one car out of each of them. Some of these other guys are getting two cars.
A minimum of two.
And so to me, that's not fair because we're losing out because it was our turn and there's already a one-car crash. So we're losing out. And the fairest way I should say it should be, if there's two cars, you have two tow companies there. If there's three cars, you have three tow companies there. And make it fair that everybody's getting the same amount of car.
This exact thing that he's mentioning was brought up at our last tow company meeting. And the entire group, including you, Sam, agreed. If it was two and they could handle two, they would take two.
Now.
You did not oppose it when we were sitting there. That is inaccurate.
Because what he said was.
I'm not going to argue it. We all were there.
Can we, how about maybe since we're working on this, we can maybe change that to try to keep the numbers fair?
I think that's going to extend your weights. Now, somebody shows up and they can put one on a rollback and hook the other up. That's one truck. We're not waiting for a second to come. Like, this is going to extend issues. And it's all going to balance out when the next time he gets two cars and somebody else gets one. It, it's.
Well, you, you're working on this, correct?
So it's okay on Wortsville Road during rush hour to sit there and wait forty-five minutes for a rollback to show up?
One was H J.
When we were a mile, that's a two miles from the scene.
Yes, and we discussed that at the meeting as well. That we're not doing it unless it's directly in front of your business. Because then other people will say, but it's within blank. So no.
Stating that you don't want to wait. And those were just your words right there. You don't want to wait for a tow company to show up.
A second, a second tow company to show, Barb. You're just hearing what you want to hear again.
Now.
You are.
Could we uh, somehow take this offline or arrange another?
It's been offline for months. It, it's.
Terrell and Griffey, well, one, this was tabled by the board until June. Um, so we'll, we'll be taking, we'll be taking this up in June. Um, there will be a proposal by them before, before the board, before the board. Um, the, the public comment time is up and we need to treat that fairly. Um, too, so the five minutes was, was up.
And actually, what do you have to do with it, since you're really good friends with one of the towing companies?
I'm not friends with any of the towing companies.
Because you're friends with Wheelers, because Wheeler stayed at the very last police meeting that we all had. About you guys going to a party together. A return.
I've never.
And you sit there and talk.
Barb, he attended a, excuse me, I mean, now there's been now.
Mayor of.
Your time, ma'am, is up. One, your time is up. That gentleman attended a party of a, of a Carlisle Borough employee that I happened to be there as an elected official. That doesn't make us friends. Thank you.
We can't go longer than.
That's fine. I mean, this is just getting to be really ridiculous.
I agree.
You're, you're working on it, right, chief?
We're trying to get everything together.
Proposal in June.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes.
Okay. Um, Ricky McLaren, uh, one-one-one Stephen Drive. I was going to ask for two items to be removed from the consent agenda and discussed. Um, one is item four A about West Hayford Estates and the other is items five B about West Hayford Estates. Um, and I have comment on those, so I don't know if you want my comment now or if that will be approved to be removed from the consent agenda and then discussed. What, what would you prefer?
Oh, go ahead.
You want me to comment now on it?
Can do it in the five minutes. Yes.
Okay. Um, so um, both of these are with regard to West Hayford Estates, which is the development that I live in, about fifteen homes. Um, we have been working with our developer, Dave Martin from Martin Homes, um, to uh, fix a non-conforming structure issue on our lot. Um, so he has put together a draft resub subdivision that we're told is going to be submitted to the township. Um, the issue is that our house is uh, within eight feet of the property line. So he has been working with an engineer to just move the property line a little bit between our home and our neighbor's home to make everything in uh, conforming. And it's not like a ill-civil man or anything like that. Our neighbors are right here as well. And we have seen the engineer development, all of that. Um, and we've approved it in green light. So we heard from our developer that um, the engineer from his side is just checking some boxes and then we'll be submitting it to the township. So our request is that if you are going to approve either or both of these, if you could make an approval conditional on him taking that to the finish line to actually complete the resubdivision so that our appropriate property lines are the way they should be with everything conforming. Um, there's, you know, he's, he's working on it. We've seen the plans. It looks like it's all in good order. We just want to make sure it's taken to the finish line and not kind of lost in the sauce with uh, something be, being approved before that's finished. Okay.
Okay.
Sean, is that, is that a bona fide reason for us to maybe hold it to make sure that they get their concern met or not?
We, my, no, um, but my understanding is that they are agreeable to it. So for, for the release of the improvement guarantee, once, once they've provided that they've completed the improvements, um, made that application to the township, we need, we need to approve that release of the improvement guarantee. Um, I understand maybe Scott perhaps could chime in on this. There was an. Um, I understand maybe Scott perhaps could chime in on this. There was an email exchange on this where um, everybody seemed in agreement with this. I don't know if there's a records representative.
No, yeah, correct. So Dave, Dave Martin is the builder of the homes in there. In conjunction, there is also a developer, which, um, is a separate entity and they are giving authorization that I've been told to fix this nonconformity between these two lots. We had a similar situation if the boardroom members in Jackson Court that they didn't find it, um, they didn't find it till afterwards, the homes were being built, that a HVAC system was actually over a property line and before Jackson Court came for as built and before they came for improvement guarantees, they did a resubdivision on a separate plan between those two entities. The current builder and then the homeowner. So this is kind of a similar situation. Um, I believe Mr. Martin has said that they're going to fix it. Um, now I this, I sent an email earlier, um, about this to the solicitor to look at. I don't know, and maybe we'll have to talk offline about how we do this, because I don't know, like you said, I don't know if we can condition it based off of a a nonconforming, um, lot. So I did, I did let Ricky know that that could be a possibility that um, they would have to come in with a new subdivision plan, just as Jackson Court did to fix this nonconformity.
They have, they have an obligation to make that right for the resident, right?
They they do.
Or J L is going to run over with the semi. So they're not left hanging.
They're not, no, no, no.
All right.
Okay. So does, sorry.
Oh, I I was just also, I'm sorry, it was important.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's some additional plots yet that have showed up yet to be reviewed too. So there's going to be, there's going to be more on this before it's complete.
That those, yeah, those plots that came in and the deed of dedication for the road dedication process that we sent in. So, um, I don't know if we want to do what exactly what we did for Jackson Court that they come in separately, but approve the as-built plan and the IG as as depicted on the agenda.
So we do pull it or we do not pull it?
So, no, you you can proceed with this, um, and then we'll all stay in communication, make sure that this gets completed. So that that read that subdivisions.
Thank you.
But they do have an obligation under.
To complete that to to conform. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so that won't be removed and he'll still take it to the finish line.
You heard what he said. They they have an obligation to correct it. So by us leasing, as we're required, he said by law. However, this, you you have other law protecting you or ordinances and solicitors said.
Okay, Tom, sorry, the Hanson's, are you, do you feel okay? Or do you want to follow up with anything in your pub five minutes or we're good?
Yeah, it's a.
This has been our whole experience.
Ricky, Ricky, it's, uh, I would just have Dave Martin reach out to us. You know, we're going to be in contact over the road dedication stuff anyway with, you know, J V H and their entity and then with Martin. So we're all going to be in contact about a bunch. So I would just tell him to reach out to, you know, Ray, myself, Aaron, Sean, and we can, you know, show what we did for Jackson Court previously so that we can run it the same way.
Just so you all know, like, the status is that we we're not in direct communication with him. Our lawyer is, um, so we will have our.
Yeah, so have you, you can have your counsel directly, uh, talk to Sean.
Okay, and then, um, he said as of yesterday, it's all making forward progress, which we believe is the case. Like, there's no bad relationship here, but that's where we're at. So we'll try to figure that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comment, is there anybody online?
Yeah, we have two online. We will start with, uh, let's see Denise Baylor. Hold on, it's gonna let me, it should let you come off mute now.
Um, I took, I took my hand down. I was just going to basically say that I agree with the stuff that Clarence put together. I thought that it was well-written and he definitely backed it up with, you know, um, other townships using some of those setbacks and some of the other conditions. I I was just supporting Clarence, what Clarence put together. I thought it was done really well. Thanks.
I'm sure he appreciates that. Thank you.
And then there's a Jennifer Printy. I don't know if you, again, if it was just a hand up for notification or what.
Hello.
Hello.
This is Jennifer Printy. I'm in, uh, 952 West Tunde Road, and I just wanted to speak to what Clarence was speaking to too. Um, I very much support what he is proposing. Um, I may not live right in the, in the warehouse area or up close to the Pike, but I do live south of there and the light pollution and the air pollution, um, is very evident down here on the, in the south end of the township. So I would hope that we, we can all work together to get some of these things to to go with so that the, uh, warehouses are not quite so invasive and and bothersome as they're going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that, we will close the public comment and move on to the consent agenda. Any questions or comments from the board on the consent?
I have a couple. You go first.
Oh, um, I I guess this is for Ray, um, let's see, 52825 on the, uh, expense report for the township. Uh, monthly medical vision premium plus HR claims. Um, I see two items on here. It's distribution amounts. Uh, it's one dash, uh, 413 uh, for 1,162. And then you come down further. It's, um, zero, one dash 413, that's 9,427. Since I do not have, um, insurances with the township, I have my own insurances. I saw this and I was wondering how we got two totals like that.
I'm gonna have Suba pull it up, but I I'm pretty sure it'd be, we take our monthly premium, we we take it and we allocate it back to each respective department of the total. If that's what he's referring to. So, yeah, so so our premium is about 102,000, um, 102,000, just a round number, 102,000 a month. That then gets divvied by every respective department based on the number of employees within that department. So that, that's what the staff does every single month when they, and that has to tally up to the exact number of the total for the premium.
Yeah, maybe we can clarify that a little bit because when you look at it, it's like, oh, they spent 1,161 dollars and 9,427 dollars, which.
More than happy to do that.
Okay. Dave, did you want to talk about that?
No. You're pretty much saying for each of those line items, that's by department.
That's, that's correct. So you get a pre, yeah, no problem. You get a premium for your medical, you get a premium for your dental and your premium for vision. We allocate that by each respective department of the total so that it's allocated properly. So obviously someone who's got 27 people in a department would pay bigger portion of that versus someone who's got three. So you might see 1,000 in one department and may see 9,000 because of the amount of people.
Yeah, just it wasn't clear. So that's why I'm asking the question. And the other thing that I had that I wanted to talk about and and I know Aaron does a good job, HRG for the township and stuff. I was wondering, can we have the township staff like do more and take all that work off, Aaron?
Um, if you want me to comment or you want Aaron, I'm sure he's not going to want to say much.
I'll, I'll, I'll talk whatever you guys want to say.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I mean, Harry, there's a philosophical discussion here. If you want to have it during the budget season. I think we've talked a lot about whether we have an in-house engineer versus a third party, and that's a philosophical discussion. And if we want to go that route, I mean, we, we've talked about it. Um, nobody's, nobody's saying it's right or wrong. I'm just saying we talk about it every year and we, we end up having, you know, what I believe is one of the premium engineers in, uh, in the state of Pennsylvania.
One of the premier engineer, that's one.
I just, I just, nobody questions that it costs us a lot of money to do all of the, the, the checks and balances, as we call it. But again, it comes back to philosophically, townships have their own engineer and they still have a consultant, but don't use the consultant as much, or they go to a third party and they use them for everything. So what's going to happen is you're going to see your third party invoices to be very big, especially in our township. Or we hire someone and minimize that.
Yeah, I guess I'm just looking at cost.
But then you have a big salary with an engineer.
You just, again, it's a philosophical approach. And and that would be the and and I would just say to the board, when we sit together in July and August and September and we talk about bringing an engineer on, let's have that discussion about what we believe the cost of an engineer, Dave, you're right, what that cost is and would that cost offset other costs. And I think that's what we have to have.
I think because Dave usually brings up if we have roads to do, why go outside and not use inside uh, the township and stuff. And I guess that's where I'm thinking, can we use more of the inside of the township versus HRG?
Yeah. So what we also should understand, I think our staff does a great job in what's in front of them every day. We also have to understand you have to have an engineer's seal before you're going to sign off on a plan. And that has to be a legal document. And we don't have anybody on staff that has what I would call a P E seal. And we're not gonna, we're not gonna sign something unless it's got a P E seal because there's liability insurance on behalf of the township. So your point is absolutely taken and I, I welcome the opportunity during the budget season to talk about philosophically going the route we are, or we look at bringing an engineer in.
We will.
Thank you.
Is that your last one?
That's it.
Okay. All right, um, we'll let, uh, April 23rd, 2025, page one. You have for one of the attendees, Jane Rich Creek. I think it should be Jake.
Yeah.
Uh, your name hasn't changed, has it, Jake? Okay, that was the first correction. Um, the other one, there is a I questioned the stormwater revision that we were going to I think it's page eight to 10. It says Supervisor Lanker emphasized it under the MS4 permit, the township is obligated to adhere to these regulations. I think I brought up concerns about us doing it and I asked for clarification from Aaron if we were required to. I don't know if I I was in extreme support of it um, upfront. So I just wanted to be stated that I had questions pertaining to it and was told that, you know, that it's something that we're going to be required to do by 2026. Because I I'm not really in favor of it, but I understand we have no choice. Um, page seven of 13 on the 514 expenses. There was a legal expense. Um, I think it was P2 legal, it was 12.4 hours for like almost $2,300. Who, what was that in reference to?
You have to know who the vendor is. Um, I, Suba can obviously look the vendor up. There's, could be multiple. Um, Suba, here it is.
It was page seven. It was a legal bill. It's, uh, Tucker, Aronsonburg Attorney.
Yes, that's the zoning, that's the zoning, um, attorney.
Do they bill us like once a month or is that a review?
They, they, they not only that, they also put together the minutes for the meeting. So that's their, that's their monthly expense.
C and 12, that's why.
Yeah, no, it's a good, it's a good question. I think, uh, it's one of the best practices we put in. Yep.
Fine, that explains it. And then Tyler, how many trees did we get from Stoffery's for?
Yeah, so that was I want to say it was 18 trees off the top of my head without looking back, Dave.
Um, there was a pair of running shoes for on eat, uh, the blonde financial for $85 Nike running shoes. What are they for?
Um, I'd, I'm gonna speculate, but I'll, you put it up if it's under 410, uh, 410. That would be my, my of, of Suba pull it up. 410 is the police. Obviously, you know, the police get a, uh, certain amount of of money allocated every year per, per, um.
So they can buy physical fitness?
Yep.
Okay, I didn't know we, I thought it was just work gear. I didn't.
Yeah, they use them for work, Dave.
Working out.
Yeah, no, not working out, working on the street. They have boots and, uh, sneaker slash shoe.
And then one quick last one, Tyler Graul, $1,000, set 1,06308 for the Jumpin' Jack Tabor to carve fuel lines.
Yeah, it had to be, yeah, it had to be rebuilt. Um, all those stuff had to be torn apart.
Fine, that included labor.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
That's all I have.
Laura, do you have any?
No, I do not.
I just asked the correction for the name and stuff we added to the.
Well, then make, we can make a motion, you can make the motion.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the, uh, corrections to the minutes as I presented.
We have a motion as a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is public hearing.
This is the, uh, public hearing on 6623 Carlisle Pike for inclusion in the agricultural security area. Uh, it's parcel number 38 dash 07 dash 0459 dash 014. Um, it is, uh, owned by, um, Virginia Offinger. And what we will include in the record is the application, the proposal for addition of parcels to an agricultural security area. The summary of the, uh, agricultural security area advisory committee review of landowner requests for inclusion in agricultural security area. The Cumberland County ASA review report. And the memorandum drafted by, uh, Supervisor Brown dated May 22nd, 2025. Um, Supervisor Brown, I don't want to steal your thunder. If you want to provide an over overview and touch on the, the factors on on this one to get that on the record and then, and then we can move forward.
Uh, sure. You want me to cover when we received the application and that it was advertised in a newspaper or just?
Just, just hit the, the factors. We've, by including all those documents, I've, I've added, um, to the record, all the, all the basics.
So, uh, the primary, um, rec, um, requirement for, uh, property to go into Ag Security Area, it must have a minimum of 10 acres or must have an anticipated yearly gross income of at least $2,000. This property, the Offinger Farm, has a total of 14.387 acres, so it qualifies for that most basic requirement. Um, there are other factors that must be considered. You have to have soils that contain class one through four soils uh, that are conducive to agriculture. Needs to be viable agricultural land. Um, this property has been used for goats, uh, horses in the past, uh, has a vineyard and approximately a 1.7 acre meadow hayfield. Um, the parcel is zone residential. Ag use is permitted in residential zone and R1. Uh, it also meets, uh, the township comprehensive plan. Um, it's allowed mixed-use development, uh, primarily non-residential nature. Um, and it also fits in with the county comprehensive plan, uh, which shows the parcel as conservation and parcel, partially suburban character. Um, so it does fit in all of these categories. This parcel is also preserved through natural lands and the Township Land Preservation Program. So it does meet those qualifications. Um, part of the reason for enrolling. So it does meet those qualifications. Um, part of the reason for enrolling in an Ag Security Area is to protect, uh, farming in the township. So, uh, want to protect that farm from any nuisance, um, possibly complaints from, uh, joining residential or industrial parcels. This will allow that. In addition, it also provides some eminent domain protection. Um, any eminent domain claims such as by a utility or a government would have to go through the agricultural land condemnation approval ward in order to be, um, allowed. So, um, that's part of the reasoning for enrolling this parcel in the ASA. I think that's about all I have.
That's all you need to touch on. Thank you. Um, any questions from the board? Okay. And is there any public comment on this item? Nobody, nobody raising a hand online. Okay. Um, then we will close the public hearing for public comment and, uh, Chairman Griffey, you can, you can take, uh, take the, uh, the issue under advisement for a motion.
We'll close the public hearing and, uh, I would look for a motion.
I will make the motion to approve adding, um, the addition of 6623 Carlisle Pike to the township's agricultural security area.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business ordinance 2025 dash 04, amending Silver Spring Township pretreatment program.
Yeah, this is just an administrative, um, function. I don't know if Supervisor Lenker wants to make any commentary, but it's, it's an update to the 89.
Required the authority, even the township and the authority have a pre-treatment program for the operation of the authorities. They're programmed for, uh, limits set toward.
Right. Any, any questions?
Um, if there is none, I will make a motion.
Yes, please do.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Subdivision and land development, uh, 808 West Trundle Road. Um, is there someone here from? Good evening.
Good evening. Um, we got you, uh, the board approved the conditional use application for this property. And one of the conditions was that we'd have to come back to the board with the final site layout. Um, so what I do have is to show you the, the changes. I do have.
Thank you.
Second page is the current, the revised plan.
Oh, that's different than what we have.
No, that's, that's the same as the first page. That's what you had approved. Hearing the second page is showing you the difference.
Offinger.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a far piece. And, uh, approval.
E N G E R.
We are proposing also to replace the curbing at one time along West Trundle. But we don't have to replace the curbing now except for just the entrance. We're going to reduce the entrance to 24 feet, put two, uh, ramps in. Uh, we are replacing the sidewalk. The sidewalk out there is about three and a half feet wide. So we have to make it four feet. There's one section. We have to bump it out to five for ADA requirements. Um, but the second plan does show that. We worked with Aaron on some grading, uh, up against Church Road as well. Um, so again, there's not really much graphical other than that one pit parking space up against the building there. Uh, on the original plan, we showed five spaces there. We have hatched an area there to pull the parking away from the building a little bit. So people, when they pull, they back out, they have room to really turn and leave. Uh, so we removed that left parking space there. So we went from 11 spaces down to 10.
Aaron, question, um, I don't see anything on here pertaining to signage, cause when you get out to the exit, there should be a no right turn sign, cause that's a one-way on church. So either that correct signage there and or can we ensure that the curbing is such that it, it impedes right turn? Cause people don't look at signs anymore.
Yeah. So, um, the, the plans, we, we have multiple plans are on our end. Um, and one of the plans does show the signage. They luckily have added all that signage and they did modify the curb going onto Church Road to essentially channelize everything to the left. So, um, I'm, I'm fairly confident that they've, um, taken care of that for you.
I see the parking area also is one way from about halfway from the building to the, the point on the eastbound side or the eastern end of the property. It shows double arrows going east, but it shows, uh, two-way traffic up near the storefront. Is the entranceway ingress and egress or is, is that a, that's still a two-way?
Yeah, on the entrance and Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, the entrance on West Trundle is, is still a full access, uh, drive and that was cleared with PennDOT.
Is that, there's no turning restrictions on that? It's a full?
Yeah, not that I'm aware of. Correct.
It's not right in or right out?
Right.
Okay.
And the other?
And then, um, to the south side of the building, is that going to? I think that's currently asphalt. Is that going to continue to be asphalt or?
Opposing landscaping there, grass, grass front. The front page, which you had on your conditional use approval has the signage on it. Um, and that's not changing. The second page only shows the layout that was revised. The signing is going to stay the same.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, uh, that the, Aaron, especially like on the one ways.
Right.
Maybe that you ensure that the, the curb contour is such that it impedes and.
Yeah.
Um, that would be my concern.
Yeah. And.
Out there.
And Joe and the applicant worked with us to come up with a really good solution there. There's multiple signs and good channelization. So yeah.
That was my main concern there. I'm good.
Thank you for the updates. Really nice. Um, how many people are going to be our employees working in the store?
Two, two employees in the store?
With two cars.
With two cars.
I would assume they'd have two separate cars.
So that takes away some of your parking spaces.
Unfortunately.
Um, and if you get a big rush and people want to come to the store, where do they park if there's no parking places?
Well, there's 10 spaces. So I don't know what your rush is, but, uh.
It's a sale, could be a sale on candy, chocolate candy or something.
Yeah, I, I unfortunately, we can only provide some, this is a really small triangular piece of property. You know, we're trying to do the best we can with it, you know?
I know, but I just, I just wanted to make sure that you knew that, you know, there could be a rush and where you're going to park the extra cars. Another thing, and I always get complaints about Church Road. As you, if you've driven down Church Road, you know, it's terrible.
Hmm.
Now, if you want to fix the road, that would be great, but.
That's the burrows.
I, I know that, but.
Um, you're trying to run for borough council.
Yeah. Um, so you're not going to get a lot of traffic coming that way. You're going to probably get it from 641. A lot of traffic is coming, but, um, I just want to caution you a little bit on, on parking if.
Sure.
Not that you may get that run on parking, but.
Yeah, appreciate, appreciate that. Yes.
So just.
It's a tough site.
Yeah, it is. It is. It really is.
The, it says existing dumpster location. That was mother question. Are you going to use that as the new dumpster location as well? Um, them backing out onto churches, is there visibility for them as they're backing up to see to the east? Because all the traffic will be coming from that. They have to put the back of the truck that way. Is there sufficient, um?
When they back out against traffic and leave.
They're done dumping.
Yeah.
Cause they're, they're cab forward trucks. So you have a lot of, there's probably 30 feet of truck before they are close to the road. Is there? Is that going to be an issue like?
Looking back toward the intersection?
Towards, yeah, towards church eastbound. Yeah, or the, to the.
I believe the site distance is pretty good looking back toward the intersection is.
Okay. As long as you're, that was my concern. Okay.
Once you're, uh, when do you expect to be open with this?
Well, I'm not sure. We've had a bunch of hurdles with PennDOT on the, on the sidewalk to the entrances and so forth, or the ramps and so forth, which we now are got over that hurdle. So I believe the owners are going to be submitting for their building permits. I think this was one thing sort of holding up the building permit review, which I think you guys have. Um, once they get the building permit review and process, they're going to start on it right away.
So by the end of the year?
I would say, I would say so, yeah.
Okay, Laura, I'm sorry. Do you have questions?
No, I did not have questions.
Are you planning some type of maybe an outdoor thing where people can take, uh, food that they buy or something outdoor, like a patio?
I don't think so. No, no.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anything from staff?
No, uh, under the consent, I think you guys approved the, uh, the, uh, improvement guarantee. So as once we get the, once we get the establishment of the financial security, we can schedule that pre-construction meeting and then run it through, um, you know, the dependents.
Evening, right?
Yep. Yep.
Can we talk about that now or just wait till then?
I believe that was approved under the consent under, uh, 4B already.
Was it? Okay.
Yeah. So I, it was a decrease, I believe, from.
Increase 136 bucks.
Uh, adjustment of $136 for a balance. Yes. Yeah. So, so that's what, that's, that's what it said at, it's a set at, uh, 80,774.
They'll have to redo their, you gotta get a bond or letter of credit for that.
Yeah, yeah. I believe you had one previously. So well, your bank, when we send out these letters, you'll send it out to your surety company and then they'll send us an updated letter to reflect this new number.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, is there a motion?
Sean, do we need a motion since it was just the condition was that they just come back and show it? I, I forget the exact condition language.
I think we, we do, we want a motion that the board is accepting the, um, the revisions.
There's no motion. I'll make the motion to approve conditional use as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next, um, we will move on to HJ Towing and Recovery, uh, Final Land Development Plan. Good evening.
How are you doing? I just, I'm just asking for the, you know, variances on these curves inside the parking area of the trucks. When we pull in the driveway, I don't think it's going to be feasible because the trucks are going to run up over them. You know, break them up. It just, in the middle of a parking area for tractor trailer, it's just not good.
Anybody have any comments, questions?
No, but I do have a comment. Aaron, they showed on that plan burning bushes and I think potentially they might've been added to the invasive list. Can we double check that? Cause I was at a class and I thought they said.
I think you're right.
That they, they were going to be added. Can we make sure if it is that he's given an opportunity to pick something else? And also.
Sure.
With PPNL being in the back, when I looked at the plan, do we really need landscaping? Cause PPNL utilizes that. I would rather see if there's people on the residential side, if maybe he can spruce that up a little bit and then it's a win-win. You know, give them a few extra trees.
I think that may, uh, may have been part of the variance.
Yeah, doing that.
Okay. Yes. I seen on the plan and showed it and I thought it makes no sense for you to have to put stuff back there.
Yeah, no, yeah, we're putting the big shrubs there to, you know, block the view.
Okay. And one other thing we do have on our future map that the road realignment, we ensure that.
Dave.
We might need.
I did look into that, that, that road was removed from the map during the last update. It is no longer on that map.
We need to get that back on. Because if they ever develop that site at PPL, we need, we're going to be stuck. This happens all the time. I, why was it taken off?
You talking about the roundabout over behind Wrench, right?
No, no, no. Um, if you're at your property, you know how at the Speedway, you come up over the hill, Ridge Hill, the road makes a hard 90, you have to go up to Bernheisel. We were looking, it won't affect your property, but maybe just a little on the bank of running that road over towards the park entrance and straightening it out and getting rid of that dog leg so that it's a straight shot.
We talked about that two meetings ago and I think the, the problem with that is being the house is residential. I don't have a problem with it, but you're taking out the sharp shrubbery then between me and, uh, um, can't think of this name, but anyways, we're taking that shrubbery out.
Yeah. Well, what I, what I'm getting at is if we can maybe look at what we would need and maybe that would entail, Aaron, looking at that, what we would need just for right of way and somehow working to ensure that there's, we can keep it, make it work, but meet his needs as well.
See, that's another thing Scott can tell you. I don't think we can do it now because we were already zoned and you would have to fight yourselves on that between.
Zoning hearing board.
Yeah.
But I, it's, because now would be the time. I don't want to impact him because it isn't his fault that that was taken off the map, but we need the, that, that's insane. We wouldn't want to get that.
If, just, just, just because we're at zoning hearing board, right? Chime in if I, if I, uh, say anything here, but, um, what, uh, zoning hearing board talked about with staff was that the differential in elevation here, plus the willingness of PPL giving up land on the backside here. So the, what zoning hearing board talked about was giving them relief on the backside here for, um, shrubbery so that, um, so that Jake can put some here because we still don't know what we're doing over here. And that's, and the other, the other thing, which we'll touch in sidewalk in a little bit, is another thing for that. So I totally get it. I mean, zoning hearing board, um, also talked about putting a road behind these residences. Now I understand they might not be residences forever. However, they are right there. And then the willingness of a, you know, a, uh, PUC relic, re- regulated utility giving up land, you know, for a roadway is also, you know, the issue there.
Yeah, but you understand if we would do the road before they would do a plan, um, I think then they're out of luck. Our, our goal is to eliminate, this is another issue where you have a turn, you know, we, we're talking about state road. We, we need to take care of this stuff and that was the whole purpose. We had that in the plan. I don't want to impact him. But if we can look at what we need for a right of way there, see if we can accommodate what he needs to do. Um, we need to be forward thinking. We always wait till it's too late and then try to correct. This, this is a chance we have. See if we can make sure that it is taken care of.
Yeah, Dave. And the other thing here is you, you can see that the elevation here, the elevation change here is massive. I mean, this would, that would be a massive undertaking to put something through back here. So it's just, it doesn't, just, just the reason why we talked about it. It's the reason why, you know, plus the utility, you know, connections with the poles here. Jake, those poles are what? Two, did we measure them like two or two, two feet off the property? You know, off the edge of the road there.
Far at all.
And I understand all that, that, that can all be rectified through, through utility work when that time comes, but I think that even if the road has to cock a little bit to the, to the west, we can get that through. I would just like to see that we accommodate his needs and try to ensure that any screening is back, that it won't interfere if we do the road.
Yeah, I don't, at this point. Yeah, I don't, at this point, I'd, I'd, I'd have to defer to Celeste Schultz, I don't know if with the zoning hearing board's decision with the layout, I don't know, I think he would have to go back and ask for a change in that site plan to accommodate the supervisor's request.
Right, if it, if it conflicts with the zoning hearing board decision, they, they would have to go back and have that revised.
Then, and that doesn't mean that it couldn't happen in the future and not, and, right, that if there is a road consideration for sometime down the future, you know, the township could work with the property owner to go back to zoning hearing board to change it, but for right now.
But what ends up happening is, say the trees are in there eight, ten years, you're getting infill there to help screen. And that's the purpose of it, and then we end up having to take some of them out, are we doing any favors? I, can you go get it, Aaron, to see if we can make it work without packing what he needs to do?
Yeah, and, and what I'm thinking right now, and this is me stepping, you know, putting my neck out, so I'd have to have smarter people than me confirm whether this can work or not. But I'm wondering if they could put like some almost like deferred dedication of, of land to the township if like certain circumstances are met, like other right of way being secured, uh, cooperation with the zoning hearing board between the township and the, um, applicant, things like that. It, it might require some odd wording, but I'm wondering if something like that could be possible and they just show that area on the plan. That way they don't have to take out their current screening that the zoning hearing board required.
Sean, question for you, if we would do something where we would put a road in, in the future and it would impact what his requirements are, then we would just have to rectify that as a township, like putting trees in to replace that when we do the roadwork, or how would that work?
If, if you were to take that by eminent domain or, you know, an agreement for eminent domain.
If we would do that work, we, we don't know when it's going to occur, but we had that vision of running Bernheisel out straight to the light and creating a bypass that those ha- homes there don't have all that traffic. Um, if, say for instance, we, we're required to remove four trees or do grading, we would be responsible, not the property owner, if that's required under the, to, to rectify that, that he's in compliance.
If, if you, if you take it by eminent domain, you don't need to do anything else to keep him in compliance, he's yeah, I mean, you, all you need to do under eminent domain is, you know, go through that procedure and then compen- compensate the, the party you're taking the property from.
Okay.
You know.
But it wouldn't be on the hook, we wouldn't be putting him out.
He wouldn't be in violation because the township has taken that place by eminent domain.
Okay.
See, Dave, I have almost twenty foot from my fence, that whole, that whole dip there where you're saying about the elevation, that's all mine there. But the problem with it is now you'll be intruding on the neighbor, which I have no say in. I already have twenty foot of buffer there, well, over twenty foot, but it's the trees that everybody's been worried about.
Yeah, I understand.
And, you know.
That's why, that's why I asked him. Um, and we don't know, but I don't want to impact you by a decision, that's why I was asking, but um, it sounds like he's saying if we do that action, i- it's nothing on you.
No, I think it was the PPNL was the biggest thing because I know that was, we talked, like I said, we we actually discussed this, I think, two or three.
What are we looking at here?
That's the curve you're standing on Ridge Hill. And that's their lot, see how the road starts to curve, right, like going to Stoney Ridge? We wanted to run that road straight back so that we could bypass those homes and keep people from, you know, they get headlights as they're running on a turn and a lot of that traffic, we, especially as middlesex develops out on country club, this seg- it, 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 uh, separate.
No, I understand, I just, I, I.
Yeah, see, they're about where that tree is, that little pine tree, that is about where my ground stops, so you got a good bit of my ground already there, but if you intrude to the neighbor, you know, I can't say, I mean, it was more or less the trees that everybody's been worried about, so we left them there and now we're pu- park, uh, planting the pine trees out along the back, you know, so the people on the right, the two, two EX, we're planting them trees right there along that, that row right there.
I, I think there, we could make it work if we had to, I just worried about not putting you in a financial situation where you'd have to put other trees in, but Sean's saying, if we do an action for eminent domain, you would be covered.
You, you, right, you could, you could compensate them for the loss of the trees and replacement of trees.
Yeah. So you'd be all right then.
Well, like I said, we were going to do this the last time and then you guys had to sue you guys, you know,
Yeah.
the other board and it was just a bunch of nonsense to I have twenty feet, I didn't care if they took it, but I don't want you guys to come back to me down the road and say now we don't have the trees there and then that was the big concern.
That was my concern as well, and that's why I clarified with the solicitor.
So are we going to do something about that? Besides this plan, or we do, this, this is a future?
Well, I, I'm, can we get that road back on the map? I didn't know it was taking off, I thought.
You, you would just need to amend the, the official map. I, I say just need to, but you have to go through a process to do that.
I understand, but we need to.
So, so nothing has to, we could move forward with this plan and, and talk about.
Can you make a note of that, Scott?
And then add that on the official map.
But sure.
Yeah, it was on the previous map, it's not on the newest map.
Yeah, whatever, whatever, whoever's going to do it.
We don't hold up my stuff to do.
It's going to take five or six years.
Yeah, because this building, every time I, every month it costs me fifty thousand dollars to put this thing on. And I've been trying to keep it moving and trying to be.
We understand.
What's another four hundred?
Yeah, trust me.
No, yeah, we don't want to impact you. No, we're not, we're going to go anyhow, I just, as long as that's taken care of.
Yeah, we, we, we have the whole plan to talk about, I know, I know Jake specifically wanted to talk about the interior landscaping. The one thing that staff wants to, and I think Jake, we talked about this, is that any trees that would, that would be needed internally, right, or any landscape that would be needed internally, be put somewhere else on the property so that it enhances another part of the parcel, so that it's, it may not be in the actual parking areas, but it'll be somewhere on the property to still have that landscape to material.
Have a problem with the trees, I mean, we're going to make it look nice, we're going to rip down them two houses out front and everything, I mean, I'm not and nothing against, but I'm not going to spend six million dollars on a building to have a crappy landscaping, even the trees that we talked about that's in the middle of the lot, we're letting them for right now too, until we get new ones.
Right, yeah, and we just, we're just saying, you know, if, if there is a waiver on the interior landscaping, right, the staff and engineering is requesting that one of the conditions is that somewhere else on the property, you show what would be needed in the parking areas somewhere else on the property.
And we, Tyler showed that in the last
Yes.
Even said about, you know, so we, we did show trees elsewhere, but not in the middle of the curving, you know, it's just
Yep.
Trucks come in there, turn around all the time, they may not even be mine, they turn around and they run up over everything and you know, so we don't mind putting the, the extra trees.
And then, and then just for the board, the last topic's the sidewalk and I'll let, um, I think most of you know what's going on with the sidewalk, so, you know, the, the decision needs to be made, you know, by the board on deferral, fee and lieu, half and half, no sidewalk. Because the entire property technically would meet the ordinance that would need to be sidewalks, so there's different options, correct?
And the thing is, nobody, nobody.
We, and we don't, and we're not recommend, you know, it's staff's recommendation, and Ray, correct me if I'm wrong here, but staff's recommendation for Ridge Hill because of the uncertainty of what we're doing over there, we would
Right.
take some type of fee and lieu or deferral when that project comes to fruition and then the front part of the Carlisle Pike, that's more of how the board feels because it's either the entire length of their property, which spans Yeah, uh, quite a long way, or is there an option that the board does fee and lieu for all of it, or deferral for half of the property and some of the other things, that's, that's, you know, the board, we're looking for direction for the board on that one.
And my thing with the sidewalk, I don't mind, I mean, I really don't want to spend two hundred thousand dollars, because that's what it's going to cost to do that whole thing, but it makes no sense at all for me. The only business, the whole way up through there, to have a sidewalk. There's none in front of Cumberland Valley, there's not, nothing in front of the Rover dealer. It would just be my, my area with the sidewalk and I'm I think it's crazy, okay, I'm just talking out of my, for me to be the only one with the sidewalk. Um, and there's all industrial buildings there, I mean, there's warehouses, nobody has sidewalks, but they're trying to, I mean, I'm, I'm not meaning it, but it's two hundred and something.
No, and it's always been, well, if this, we don't start here, we don't start there, I mean, that conversation's been going on since I've been on the board.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I don't mind if we defer, and like I said, we can even put it, I think we talked, uh, the last time, even if I would ever sell the property, whoever bought it next still have that deferral in it that you're responsible for, what the sidewalk's stuck in.
Yep.
Okay. What, what's the pleasure of the board on that particular?
What are we going to do all of them?
Well, I, I, I thought we were just talking about the sidewalk, I mean.
I, man, I was saying can deferral because then when the day comes.
I was thinking deferral as well.
Okay, so I think we're.
And, and that's just to confirm, that's deferral on.
Years, you know, but, you know, I just.
Just, just for confirmation, that's deferral on the Carlisle Pike and for Ridge Hill.
Yeah.
On both sides.
Ridge Hill with the elevation changer, I don't know how you get that sidewalk in.
We talked about, we, we haven't come up with what we call the final plan and where there was discussion of, of widening that, if you remember. And we were like, if we do that and we widen it, do we, do we create a problem? Or, so if you want to defer it, that's an option too, so if we do widen it, we'd have a better understanding where it could be placed. And it, and if it doesn't happen, then the board can make that action, but for now.
Ridge Hill and the Carlisle.
And there is telephone poles there on Ridge Road.
Yep.
Guys have to, I think Scott, you know, they're like two foot off the road, so they're going to have to be, I can't put a curb, you know, PPN.
There's this bankment there, I, I mean, you're talking, that, that's.
It's insane, yeah, but I mean, I don't mind if we just defer it, I, I mean, if we have to do it someday, if you guys do widen the road, okay, but for me to try to do it now, I think it's, it's foolish for you guys to go rip it back up.
Wouldn't disagree with you. Um, what about the rest of the waivers, any questions, concerns?
None, none at all.
No, I have no questions on that.
Okay, um, so, um, I will consider a motion on, uh, this seventeen thousand, eight hundred square foot building with associated improvements.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve preliminary final land development plan with proposed waivers as presented, four of them being such raised curb parking, space definition, curb end islands, landscaping, interior and sidewalk with the deferral being at a date requested by the township.
Uh, we have a motion, is there a second?
Not gonna.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Mine, opposed, motion carries.
Dave, to answer your question about burning bush, yeah, uh, it's now listed as a noxious weed and it was banned for sale as of this year, so.
Make sure you don't use that.
Yeah.
It's on your plan.
Yeah, and I'm, I'll make sure Terry knows to release the money if fifty other shrubs are planted instead.
Want to do something about, make a note to, to do something about that road or?
Yeah, Scott, can you, uh, or Ray, whoever's, that's in their wheelhouse? Can we work to get that back on that map?
Yeah, absolutely, we can, we, we can work.
Yeah, I don't know why that was taken off, that was one, when we had our meeting that time, we got them one years ago, that was one of the top ones if we wanted this done.
I like your jacket, by the way, that looks very professional.
I'm getting fat, so I like to cover up my belly. But, uh, yeah, well, and like I said, we did talk about the road, it was just that it was a bunch of conflicts of interest with everything.
But we're going to have a battle probably with PPL anyhow, I think.
Feel free to drop by every month if.
We'll throw your name around back, we'll see who that gets.
I asked them about using that hall of the staff, but they will not, you, you can't use it, you've got to go through them and they will not give anybody permission.
No, they won't.
Cause I thought it'd be nice just to drive back there and get into the back lot, but absolutely not, they said. I don't know, you know, they put it there, but, you know.
Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Jake.
Uh, next on the agenda is new business, uh, Paul Walters Park Project and the construction fence. Is that, would that be you, Tyler?
Yes, yes, so, um, the, the current phase in the contract with Kinsley is coming to a close here. Um, one of the outstanding things that we need to give, uh, direction on is the perimeter fencing that we currently have around Paul Walters Memorial Park. Um, so, in, in talking with Kinsley, right, we don't want to hold up their contract by keeping it open for an unknown amount of time, so we would like to close the contract with Kinsley here at the end of June, but with that, the fence is in that contract. Um, so Kinsley was gracious enough to get us in contact with the fence company that they're using and we were able to have some conversations with them and provide some options, and this is all stemming from some conversations we've had in the past of you know, protecting the site, making sure it has, uh, full grass growth. Um, also, uh, with the current site conditions, with the huge mound of rock that's there, that is waiting for the next phase uh, to be used in all the trails and all the foundation work and whatnot. Um, we decided to put two options in front of you tonight is we can assume that lease agreement from Kinsley for about five thousand, not about, for five thousand eighty-one dollars a month in rental costs. Uh, and in that conversation, the fence group said, if you're planning to keep it up through the next phase, you know, after seven months, you might as well just buy the fence off of us, so they provided us a price of thirty-four thousand to buy the fence from them today. And then it's ours, we can rearrange it how we want, when we take it down, we can store it for the next projects. Um, but it was an option, you know, that Ray and I talked about. Um, I, I know we talked about it last night during the rack committee, um, and there was good dialogue from there about, you know, what is the best, i- it's a tough question, right, thirty-four thousand is a lot of money for fencing, but also five thousand dollars a month, um, is a lot after so many months. Um, and there's also the, the thought of yeah, correct, the thought of how do you protect the assets that are on the site right now? Um, knowing that there's this huge mound of rock there too, that you take the fencing down, people are going to start playing on that rock and how do we maintain the safety of all, uh, residents entering the parking lot?
Leasing that, they're, they're responsible to maintain it, right?
When we're leasing the fence, yes, they, they would be responsible to take it down, take it away, if something's wrong with it, to come and fix it, yeah.
But once we own it, then.
It's ours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if something happens and the fence is down and somebody gets hurt, then we're on the hook, we're for five grand, that's like an insurance policy. They, they're maintaining it.
Yeah, as indicated, I think we just have to say to ourselves, if we're going to do the lease and we're sitting here, right, twelve months from now, and somebody said that's sixty-one thousand dollars you pay for a lease, I just, we, we just have to all accept that, which your point's well taken. So it's either, do we want to take that fence for thirty-four, or do we just want to run that lease until the second phase is done?
Well, how long will the fence be up?
Yeah, so right now with, this is a very high level tentative schedule, we're looking to go out for the next bid here, um, hopefully in July, maybe August. By the time we award in the new contractors on site, late fall, and the most of the construction will take place next spring, so we're into next July, um, most likely, uh, with that fencing.
July, a year from now.
Correct, yeah. So, a- again, it's a philosophical thing, we want to just keep it as is and let the lease company worry about it, but it's twelve months at five thousand dollars. Sixty-two, sixty-three thousand dollars.
Say somebody, the fence goes down, they have to come out and fix it.
Yep, they do. I, I, I just, one thing I would just recommend from the board is not to take that fence down, those rock piles, they are, they're, they are prime for kids to go running up and we do not want to take that fence down.
No, I agree in that liability, like that's insurance policy.
Yeah, we're just, we're looking at every dollar and I think Tyler's saying to you, what do you, what do you want to do?
That's why I went to Ray and I, this is a tough decision.
Says that would the fence be to us beyond the.
I, I mean, that's a great question, I, I mean, I, I try to rack my brain about that in the future, you know, of, once you get to Stony Ridge, you know, and we start developing more of Stony Ridge, we can use it at that point.
But you would never leave the fence.
No, it, it's a temporary fence, it's not a permanent fence structure.
The other thing too is storage. We don't have.
Correct. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah, it, it's, that's why we're bringing to you guys. It's, it's a tough call. Um, you know, to bring it down, you're also opening it up. Now you got a nice flat area for cars, uh, to go off roading on. Uh, where before it was pretty rugged and no car would go there. So like, there, there's a lot of pros, there's a lot of cons. But I do want to mention one thing. At minimum, what I would like to do is to rearrange the fence to open up the playground area again. To allow families to start using the playground area again, cause right now we have that blocked off because of the excavation around the playground.
Who, who would do that?
Uh, so if it's under the lease, we could ask the company to rearrange the fence.
Just redo it.
If it's ours, we would go and rearrange the fence.
Off till this rain, like things dry.
Hundred percent. Yeah.
That way.
Oh, yeah.
We don't have any potential rotting.
Yeah. But I, I mean, if, if you guys are okay with that, I, that's our number one call right now is not necessarily getting into the park, but. Hey, I live right next door and the playground's been blocked off. When can I, when can the playground be reopened again?
So, so we just make a motion if we want to go to the lease? Well, that'll be the motion if you want to buy.
I, I will say if you guys table this or, um, no, no motion, Kinsley's gonna look to close out their contract and I don't, I, I mean, I would look to Aaron. And Sean to see if we really, I guess we could hold open the contract, but do we really want to hold open the contract over the fence? Cause we're actually paying more through the contract at Kinsley rate than what we are directly. Yeah.
Yeah. If we're gonna keep the fence, we, we should lease it or buy it. We shouldn't do it through the Kinsley contract.
We've already spent a hundred thirty-four K in the Kinsley contract on the fence. And that's about a year's worth. Now they obviously have a markup with the contract, but.
Thing.
Yeah.
I, I say with the issue of like liability and if it comes down or it's damaged. I'm gonna say we lease it. It's insurance policy. No problem.
What do you think, Harry?
I think leasing it would be good because it's almost like an insurance policy if something happens, someone gets hurt.
It's just an awful lot of money.
Yes, it is.
So it's getting sued because somebody gets up in the pile and hurt a kid.
And they are liable? The fencing company?
Uh, I mean, I'm, I'm not an insurance person by any means. I'm the furniture on that.
My swimming pool.
I mean, yeah, I mean, they would have liability on their property.
They're not, I don't think they're gonna go after my fence company. They're gonna go after me.
Yeah. I mean, I, I'm sure we play somewhere in there.
That's right. Find them and they don't get out. Whereas if it happens on a Friday, our guys are off or Thursday night, we have three days unless we pay.
Yeah, I'll defer to Sean because I know that was when we went to put this contract out to bid, that was, uh, that, that was a very thought out between Sean and H R G. Your team and H R G's team in the contract of why we needed that fence in the place in the first place.
Yeah. I mean, obviously all the liability issues that you're talking about to start with, but if there's, if there's. Something deficient with the fence at some point and you notify the, the company you're leasing from. That allows you to put somebody else on the hook really is, is what you're, you're doing there. So not that you wouldn't get sued too. Um, but it allows you to turn around and say, well, we notified them. You have an obligation under our contract with you, that, with, with you and, and you failed in your, your obligation. So we can. You know, add, add a claim against the, the leasing company.
Do you?
Just had one other thought.
To have an answer at this meeting this month.
Kinsley will be coming in June to, for a final payment to close out.
Um, I just had a thought and, and Tyler, I haven't seen exact, um, it, would this fence be of any help to us in the future compost? Okay. That's fine. No problem. I was just thinking of a relocate, a re, a reuse. We're.
We bought it, then when we did study, our storage is the issue. We.
We don't have storage.
Yeah, it's sixty-one hundred linear feet of fence.
Fifty cents a month. You can put it in my barn.
All right. So we should just, the, the motion should probably then just go to the lease.
Yeah.
As long as we can put it in Nancy's barn, I think we should just buy it.
Well, there you go.
Can we add then to the lease about rearranging to get to the playgrounds? Can we make that part of the motion?
Uh, I'm, i- if the board as a whole is in favor of that, I can definitely arrange that with the lease company to open up the playground area again. We would just, we would just box off.
But actually, wouldn't that make a little bit less fencing or not? Or would it be the same amount?
Possibly, possibly be a little bit less. Hopefully not anything more.
Randy?
Um, these mills empty. That's water for.
That's a lot of fencing.
I don't think.
I just sixty, I just want everybody to hear that number. Sixty-one hundred feet.
That's over a mile.
Five thousand two hundred eighty. Good, Dave.
Yeah.
Just, just one question and two about if you're gonna lease it, which. I don't have a strong opinion on where the other, a mile of fence is a lot. Um, but can you put then in the lease? That if there's, they're notified, they only have a very short window to fix it. Cause if you're talking about, it's an insurance policy and then they're liable. If you say on Thursday, as you, that was, um, David, your example. Well, they say, well, we can't get around to fixing it till Monday.
Them though. Once you notify them, like the attorney said.
But can't, but can't, shouldn't it have in there that they have a.
I'm sure.
That they're responsible immediately after being notified? I'm just throwing it out there that that should be the lease.
I just know usually once you notify someone, you're putting them on notice that there's a deficiency and they're required.
Right. As soon as you notify them, they're responsible. Yep.
Yeah.
Prepare to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the.
Wait, I have one more question. Could we, we can't lease it for a couple of months and then say, okay, we, we want to buy it now. All right.
Uh, I can inquire about that.
But that was still.
Yeah, more money, but I'll be honest, like if. Somebody drives through the fence and they damage it, then we gotta buy it. If we bought it, we just lost that. We'll have to go out, fix it, probably buy panels. Where they're on the hook if something catastrophic happens.
Just to be clear, we would plan to keep this onsite through the next phase, which would. Save money with us being the lease on it versus putting it out in the next contract and just like Kinsley did, whoever in the next contractor is gonna help.
A Costco site and have them grind them up like they.
Oh, the metal?
No, the, the rock.
Oh, yeah, the rocks crushed. Yeah. Yep.
Thought it was still rocks.
I, actually Tyler, that's a very good point that they, by us having that fence, we won't pay a premium on the next phase. Cause it won't go through the next company who wins the bid.
It'll just be.
It'll be at the normal rate.
Yeah.
So we just lease it.
They'd be leasing at the next contractor and it would be packed on. So like, I just, me, I worry like, once we own it. If personnel don't go up there and it's not found, where they find it, it's a Thursday and they don't have time to fix it.
Already said that.
So I will, I will make a motion that we approve. The option of assuming the current monthly lease from long fence company in the amount of five thousand eighty-one dollars per month.
There a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Kind of am opposed, but I'm not. So.
Awesome. Thank you. I'll, uh, I'll work on getting the playground reopened and getting that, uh, lease agreement finalized with them then.
Hey Tyler, just one quick question, even though we passed it, um. Will we make sure that if it goes through, that if something happens, they're responsible for any accidents or anything like that?
Yes, I, I will review the lease agreement with Sean.
Yeah, please do. Uh, just want to make sure that we're off the hook for anything.
Sweet. Next one's mine too, then Nancy.
Next item on the agenda is sale of cut timber. I'm gonna bid sixty dollars.
I will be stating that.
Yeah. Yeah. So, um, it, this, this was a conversation a couple of months back. Uh, we cleared the, the trees along Woods Drive there, along the new municipal owned property there. Um, all the leftover cut up timber is there. Uh, the direction from the board was try to advertise it as locally as possible, to try to get local people the opportunity to bid on it and take the wood for their own personal need. Um, we advertise in the local papers, on our own website, um, in our own social medias. Uh, we did receive one bidder, uh, that was Mr. David Lankard. Um, on two of the four lots, because we had the piles of wood distinguished one through four. Um, so only two of them received bids. Um, so tonight we're looking for direction, um, to, you know, sell the two piles that received the bids. And then also what do you want us to do with the other two piles that did not receive a bid? What's that?
Bitter didn't have any interest.
I don't have that much room for that.
Yeah.
Uh. Somebody said they couldn't find it on the website, I guess.
Yeah.
So I think that might have played.
We'll give it to you for sixty dollars each and then you can.
I. Are you gonna have a cookout once you get the wood?
And I'll invite you, Harry.
No, no. Are you gonna invite everybody?
This is, yeah, this isn't for cookout.
Okay, with that, um, you're looking for direction on piles one and.
Yeah, I'm looking for direction on, do we want to sell piles two and three with the current bidder? And then what do we want to do with one and four to get rid of that wood?
I should put it back on the website and.
Put it back in like three.
They, uh.
If you want us to rebid one and four, we could. There's just the small administrative costs of advertising it again.
Our website counts meets the bid.
Yeah, we still have to put it in the paper though.
Oh, you have to put it in the paper.
And it's not cheap to put in the paper.
I mean, I thought we could get away with on our.
Yeah, although given that, given what these came in at, it's, it's below the, the bidding requirement. Um, so, so if you. I'm sorry, a donation? I don't, I don't know. But we could, we could put it back up on the web, the, just put it on the web, website.
The one so we didn't have to pay advertising.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, at this amount, it doesn't make sense to advertise.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought that they said that you could do that on the website and it counted as a advertisement.
No, they, they haven't updated the statute on that.
Things like this.
For, for something like this, that's a, yeah, minimal value.
Tonight, we can approve the sale of the two, the two, uh, the, number two and number three to the highest bidder, Mr. Lanker.
Three, three of you can approve it.
I'm sorry.
One, one needs to recuse.
For fifty dollars. I thought, yeah.
Fifty dollars each.
So we can do that.
Yes, and then re-advertise lot one and four, pile one and four strictly on the website. Okay.
Sale of the wood from Woods Drive Tree Removal Project to the highest bidder, who's Mr. Lanker. And we will, um, move to, uh, re-advertise, uh, piles one and four. Is there a second? Okay, I made the motion, I guess, and, and our seconded, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I abstained.
And Dave abstained. So, okay, we've resolved that and, and moving on to.
We would like that wood removed in twelve hours.
Hey Tyler.
Could you take the other two piles with you?
Should there not be a storage fee if the, if the bidder doesn't?
Yeah, every day. Yeah.
By the end of the week.
Nancy graciously said I can dump it at her house.
Yeah, yeah. Just FYI, Dave, we do have a waiver then for you to sign off on.
That's fine.
Yep.
Yeah, in the barn.
Oh, you told me before midnight he had to.
Dude, you better get going. Noise ordinance is at ten though, so. Don't want Deb Wees coming after you.
Okay, Mr. Moyer, you're.
Yeah. Um, so on this first topic, I'll give you a quick history lesson because it's been a while since we've talked about the contract for this job and then get into the actual topic. So, uh, I believe it was four years ago, this project started to kick off and, um. We, we were able to organize it with PennDOT to have one of, one of two options before the board, um, to improve Trinell and Locust Point. Um, one option was for PennDOT to take the lead and they would pay for everything. And if that happened, um, they, due to the PennDOT procurement process. This would probably not even really have shovels in the ground until twenty twenty-eight. The other option was what's called local lead where the township does all of the design work, fronts all of that stuff and hands off basically a complete construction project to PennDOT for them to build. Um, that would probably lead to that handoff happening in twenty twenty-six. So it would save two years. Um, but obviously then cost the township, the, the upfront funds to do that design work. So the township chose to go with the local lead option. Um, that was about three hundred thousand dollars at that time because with federal money involved. Um, there's a very strict process. It's not like any of our other projects where we can just kind of design it, get in PennDOT H O P and keep going. Um, so we've been working through that federal process. We're still on schedule for a twenty twenty-six delivery to PennDOT. So that's all good news. Um. The other advantage of going with the local lead, and I'm not saying either decision was right or wrong, they both had pros and cons, but the other advantage going with local lead was we were able to convince PennDOT to include. Removal of the hump east of the intersection that was not actually going to be in their scope. Um, so PennDOT's going to pay for all the construction related to that as well. So you did get a bonus there. The problem though, is the federal process then requires you to go through many, many steps and jump through many, many hoops till the project is ready for handoff. One of those is environmental clearances and archaeological clearances. We've talked about those in the last few years, um, that there were a few. Quote unquote hits from PennDOT. Um, they come out with their own experts and do a, it's called a field view. And kind of pick out like, hey, you need to investigate this area, investigate this area, all these things. It's based off historical imagery, known uses. They use databases for like where oil tanks have been stored, where permits for gas stations were. Anyway. All that is to say, um, PennDOT identified some areas for research. We researched them. Went back and forth with PennDOT and now PennDOT is requiring remediation for multiple areas along this project. Um, most of them relate to where auto garages or gas stations used to be. Um, I have, I have the environmental report. It, there's various things along the project extends. This is necessary by the federal process. Again, we can't dodge that. These environmental clearances and remediations are needed and we're not at H R G nor at the township level dictating these things. It's coming from PennDOT. So we got those orders from PennDOT. We've been navigating how to satisfy PennDOT's requirements. Um, and we've talked to multiple subcontractors to do this remediation work. And ultimately, and this is, number is extremely shocking. So trust me when I say, and why I'm pointing to PennDOT and not us or the township. The total for all of these subcontractors, we shopped around, we did everything we could, was roughly two hundred thousand dollars supplement to clear out the environmental and archaeological. Correct. Correct. It's five, it would be five hundred thousand at that point. Now, I won't, I, I won't say that H R G doesn't have costs in that two hundred thousand dollars. We do. Um, for like modifications of some of our permits and stuff, but the vast majority of that supplement would be subcontractors. It would not be us. Um, it's like seventy-five, eighty percent. So, um, talked to Ray and Tyler about that. Before we actually take action on that supplement, we're not asking for any action tonight. You'll see it's not under expense approvals. We haven't actually had any physical meetings with PennDOT since exploring how to navigate these environmental clearances. This has all been done through that federal process, which is like the exchange of reports and arguments and everything, um, in digital form.
Know that originally that that was gonna.
Oh, no. And unfortunately it's impossible to know because it's part of the, the federal process.
Something, we're not the ones paying for remediation.
I, I have to, Ray asked that and it's a good question. I've got to navigate myself, in fact, what, what the remediation includes. Is it us? Hiring someone to develop the remediation plan and perform the remediation or just the remediation plan and have PennDOT do it? I have to clarify that for you guys before next month.
Why I voted against.
Oh, I remember you, Dave, saying that, Dave.
Think holes and this whole thing.
Oh, yeah. I remember, I remember your, your opposition to it for that reason. Um, so regardless, we're going back to PennDOT. This will be our first like physical meeting on the issue to say, hey, guys, can you back off on some of this? It's, it's a lot of money. But no, to answer your question, Nancy, unfortunately, the way the federal process works is it's very step by step. First you do X, then you do Y. And this environmental stuff doesn't come until after you have a preliminary design together. That way they can see kind of where, you know, the roundabout might go. Then they go, okay, now that we understand what you want to. Then they go, okay, now that we understand what you want to do, we're gonna come out and do a, a field view and figure out all this environmental stuff. So it, unfortunately, when these projects kick off, it's impossible to know.
But it was a state job with the township. I thought, I didn't realize it was a federal job ever.
I mean, the, the money is coming down from federal through PennDOT to us. Um, so PennDOT is administering it, um, not the federal, uh, government, but it's.
Still gonna be there.
Yeah, so that money was secured. To my knowledge, not being a politician or anything, but yeah, that money's been secured for years, so it's not, um, my understanding is it's not up for threat.
Thought too, but it.
Yeah. No, I, I hear what you're saying. I hear you're saying, um, yeah, my understanding is this is, is secured funding. So nothing to act on tonight, just alerting you to this because it's a big deal. It's a lot of money, um, coming from PennDOT, but we're gonna try and navigate it as much as we can before we actually ask you for, to take action. So that's update one. Um, any questions I can answer before I move on to the next one?
But it's no, we have to pay for the remediation.
I will let you know, for sure.
Oh, that can be millions of dollars.
Yeah.
Well, that's why we're requesting to have a face-to-face meeting with PennDOT.
Yeah.
But it.
And it may, when we say face-to-face, it may be teams, but some type of verbal meeting where we can actually see each other. But yeah, um, I, I will let you, I will let you know that then, Dave. Next meeting, let's say we do have to take action, worst case scenario because it's local lead. I will let you know exactly what those responsibilities are.
What would a red light have caused us?
Well, so red light, uh, actually probably would have had all of this as well because of turning lanes and stuff. And where the, from what I looked at the map, these areas were all kind of right at the corners of the, um, intersection.
They're two coin.
Uh, from what I remember, you're right, Nancy. Um, but, um, the, this issue would have popped up then. Um, and additionally, I don't think necessarily, um, you have to go through what's called an ICE. Uh, it's an intersection control evaluation with PennDOT as part of this process as well. And you have to navigate four-way stop, uh, traffic signal and roundabout, among other options. And roundabout actually was the conclusion of that, so I don't think we would have been able to do a signal anyway.
Dave, what are you doing August fourteenth? Because I'm going to Monroe.
Yeah, and I, I don't, is that where the meeting's gonna be?
No, we're gonna meet with Monroe Township to talk a little bit about.
Well, you know the dynamics from probably.
Yeah. Yeah, while it's gonna change, we might as well try to get whoever's on the board before the change. At the end of the day, it helps everybody's safety, but a big part of that's in Monroe Township. And I think we need to go in front of them and explain, this is a project that's bigger than just Silver Spring. Um, and the big, actually, when you look at the, when you look at the design, a, a greater portion is in Monroe. I mean, we, we, we made the action we did a couple of years ago because, you know, unfortunately we had a, I know of one fatality, if not two, within a short period of time. But we're going, August fourteenth, I'm on the agenda to go to Monroe. I talked to him today. And I'm just gonna lay out just in a polite way that it would be great if they could support some of this financially. Um, you have three roads feeding into Trindall and the, the idea there is it's, it's a cluster. And so we're gonna do the right thing for safety and I think Monroe, I'm saying it, they may not want to agree, Monroe should have some part of this process. So I'm on the agenda. Um, it's August fourteenth. If you want to come join me, please join me.
Got anybody to go?
Well, I'm asking Dave to go.
Well, I know, but.
I can get along well with Phil, but the problem is he, he did not get re-elected.
No, he did not, but he's still in power, he's still in, he's, he's still an elected official until this January first.
Put up my phone. I mean, I don't know the news.
Seven o'clock on the fourteenth.
I've been to their meeting.
I. To not go there is a disservice to the project cost.
Would you say August?
August fourteenth at seven o'clock. It just, I also think their residents need to hear about it, not just their board. This is a bigger project than just Silver Spring. That's a main thoroughfare east and westbound. And then when you think about the amount of traffic with, um, the development that's going down below La Grange, uh, I don't know if it's three, four, five hundred homes, that Trindall Road is gonna be very busy. Seven o'clock.
Going over to, to Williams Grove. I mean, that's again, a problem.
Yeah, we can't bury our head in the sand that the, the traffic isn't gonna increase, so we, I just think that they have a part in it.
Like I said, Dave gets sick.
I'm hoping he doesn't get sick.
I'd be sick afterwards.
Oh.
Also, you remember calling us arms.
Uh, any other questions on Trinell Locust Point?
No.
Okay, moving on to stormwater permit update, so.
Did Aaron contract up Mr. Five hundred thousand dollars?
Oh, I, like I said, especially with the supplement, most of it's not even coming to, to HRG. I, I.
Just asking.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Want a permit process.
Yeah, so, um, Ray gave you a quick update, uh, just to give you my thirty seconds. Um, over the next few months, I will be helping staff develop some communications regarding what's happening on January first so that there's more technical details available for the public.
Yep. That's it.
Last thing, and it's not on the agenda, so surprise. Um, you guys see, uh, Jonathan Robinson here. Uh, JJ is what most of us, uh, call him. He has moved back to the area. Um, so he's actually about ten minutes up the road. He's more local to Silver Spring than I am, and that's important for my next point. Um, this is first time I'm saying this publicly, so I've been the township engineer for seven years here in Silver Spring. Um, I've been offered a promotion at my company at HRG, so, um, I am going to take that promotion and, uh, therefore JJ will now be taking over as the direct representative of HRG here at the township. So, um, it's been an awesome seven years. The good news is, um, I think, uh, for as much as uh, certain board members have said they've enjoyed working with me, I can guarantee you JJ's an even better engineer than I am. So, um, you'll be in good hands. And then additionally, I'm actually not fully leaving. Um, uh, some of you may remember Brian Emberg used to be here kind of looking over to make sure everything was okay on, at the big picture level. Um, then he left and retired. Matt Banano was doing it. Some of you have met Matt. Um, so I will still be here in that role. So I'll be helping JJ, Ray, any staff, any board members with big picture issues that you may need guidance on, but otherwise JJ would be your day-to-day representative. So, um, wanted to reintroduce him. He'll be attending all the meetings between now and, uh, the end of the year. And then maybe even filling in for me for a few of them, but otherwise I just wanted to let you know that's, that's the news. It's been an awesome seven years. And, um, like I said, you'll be in very good hands.
Yeah, I honestly expected this for the last five and a half, six years after I got to know you and see you in action, Aaron. I think you're probably one of their most valuable employees. I mean, we were on shaky ground there when you came in.
I remember.
You, uh, you brought the Titanic up from deep depths. And, uh, you know, like, I, I don't say that about any, anybody and everybody. But very select few people, I thought you did a great job. Like, you, you brought credibility back. And, you know, I thought you made sound decisions. You always gave us the options and left us choose. And would give us the pros and cons and we, I, I don't think we really ever had anybody do that before.
Yeah.
So I appreciate all the work you've done for the township. It meant a lot to me. And I wanted to thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Dave. I really appreciate that.
So just reduce those numbers on that Trinell Road.
You know, the good news is, the good news is ignoring the, the supplement and the, I'll restate the subcontractor costs. Uh, JJ's rate is lower than mine, so you'll, you'll save some money there, too.
Great.
But yeah, thank, thank you for an awesome seven years. Um, it's been a privilege. Uh, I'll still be here for the next few months and then even after that in an advisory role.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
You sure you don't want to stay for another seven?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm looking forward to the promotion, so I'm sorry, Harry. I gotta.
Talk to your boss.
Yeah, I gotta take care of my family.
Well, Harry's family.
Yeah, that's true. I'm, I'm saving up to put him in a home. Uh, I'm sorry, Harry. I had to.
I'm moving on to expense approvals. We have, uh, codification of township ordinances as approved twenty twenty-two to date.
Yep. So, um, I'm gonna do this as a real quick summary. So all of you know that the twenty twenty-two ordinances was not codified. So the proposal in front of you is to look at this in two fashions. One is to take the twenty twenty-two ordinances, codify them. Uh, in the codification process, add anything that we added beyond that twenty twenty-two to date. Go through that process and then we would have codified ordinances on the website. Understanding that we also are right now going through a zoning edit, right? And that, those edits would, would come to the board probably in June. But by the time they're redlined, looked at, edited, it may be August. And then in August, if you approve the final other project of the edits of the zoning ordinance, that would go through a forty-five day review and then you would be in September. And you would then, if you made that decision, we would add that to the codification, which means in twenty twenty-six, we'd have another expense to do the codification. The reason I've come to you now today is to talk about this. I think, as I look, I'm looking at one person here and I'm looking at Clarence. Um, some, some people have often suggested if we had a codification, it would be much easier for us to go on the website, look at it and understand what the current laws are. So we all are aware, if you go this route tonight, it will take five months to get it codified. Okay, they have to do all the edits, they have to do the codification. Um, it would be probably October when it is completed. So the question for us is, do we do that now? Or we do it all at once, knowing it may be May of twenty twenty-six, to get it all done with the latest edits on the, on the zoning? So that's, that's why I brought it to the board because of the, the, of that challenge. But go ahead, Dave.
Question, Ray. If we get this done now, we follow through with it. As we do changes in the future, or there's anything, do we, is that for staff to go in and review to make sure there's nothing else, or do we have to go through the process again every so often to get it re-codified?
Once this is codified, each time we pass that law or ordinance, it will just be added to the codification.
But if there's something, like different areas within the current ordinances, we have to find them as well, right, to eliminate, you know, redundancies or conflicts? That would be our staff's job to do, or how, how do we do that?
That, that is correct. Staff would make sure that the, the language aligns throughout the entire document. And then we would provide that language and document to, uh, E three sixty, and then they would add that to the codification. Our staff has done a great job with it. Uh, I, you know, and I think all of us in this room have heard the frustration of having one document to go to. And so, uh, and I'm, I'm, you know how we are about expenses, so the question for us is, do we do this now, knowing we will have to do it again in twenty-six? Or do you want to wait for, to do all of it in twenty twenty-six? So that's a philosophical discussion, um, approach or, uh, perspective. So that would be what's in front of the board.
And I'm in, I, my personal opinion is that we should do what we can right now. I'm tired of hearing about it and, and I'd like to have something that says we've accomplished some part of this.
Does it make it any easier later if we do something now? And then when they have to redo it, there should be a lot less to do, correct?
Um, it, it should be easier because you'll have, you'll have the codi, yeah. Um, but, you know, again, the other thing it will do for us is it'll give us a chance to put a line item in twenty-six to have that in the budget, so when we have the additions, we can just go forward and just have it happen. So.
Clarence has some.
I think I speak for a lot of the residents when I say it has been very frustrating. I don't see why we shouldn't just have a policy of every year just codify, or, or some period of time where we regularly codify it. It's been.
And that is the plan going forward. It just has not been.
Well, it hasn't been up till now and, you know.
We.
I, I, I was told twenty-three would be done in twenty-four. And here we are in twenty-five. So just make a policy where this is get, gets done on a regular basis, whatever you decide is right, and just do it. Put it in the budget, make it happen. Set aside whatever time needs to be done. This is part of the cost of doing business. And having zoning ordinances or, or any ordinances for the public and for those who come in and support us to have to look at and not have to tell somebody from out of town that, hey, don't look at the E three sixty, let me send you the actual zoning ordinance, or this is how you find it on E three sixty.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
Well, we talked about, when George and Dean was on the board, we had a discussion, and I thought we had made a motion that time to do this and it never happened. I, I'm kind of at a loss.
Well, we can only, that's the premise we need to go forward.
I agree with him. There should be something in place, you know, every eighteen months or so that.
If we put in the budget every year, once we go through this big codification, we'll have the expense available to update that. And it should be done every year, every time we may have a change. I'm just saying, we, we, if we don't do this, which is okay if we don't want to, we'll be in May of twenty-six waiting to get it all done.
Keep kicking the can down the road on everything.
Well, we're not gonna do that if we vote for this tonight.
Make the motion.
I will make a motion to, um, codify, wait a minute, a, a motion to codify township ordinances approved from twenty twenty-two to date for an unbudgeted amount of five thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those, um, motion carries. And moving on now to supervisor and staff comments. Amy, you, I'll start with you. You never have any comments. But, and, and Elaine doesn't have any comments, but we're happy that Elaine is here. Uh, Mr., uh, Tyler?
Uh, the, the only thing I wanted to do is just, um, about the township official map, Dave, um, I'll connect with Ray on that and just show him what I found. I think, I don't want to say I misspoke on it, but I think my confusion is we have that two thousand seventeen map. But then it wasn't updated accordingly with the new comprehensive plan. So I, I just want to get with Ray and Sean on that to see, you know, we have that seventeen approved one, but then there's the comp plan map that does not, no longer show it, so what supersedes what is what I need to track down with them.
There was a time back in, it was pre-pandemic where, and Scott, you might have been involved.
Two thousand seventeen.
It, it was around that time. There was a map and we showed places where we needed to correct things and they were to be all added to that map. We ought to ensure.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to bring that up, that I, I don't want to say I misspoke, but just in case I did misspeak, I, I will review that with Ray.
If you can find that map.
I, yeah, I have that two thousand seventeen map, but then, like I said, all the documentations with the new comp plan and whatnot, no longer shows it. So I need to get with Ray on that to understand.
Cause that was to be incorporated, but, um, we ought to look to make sure everything is on that map that you have. Could we, we had done.
Yeah, understood. I just, I just wanted to make sure that.
We showed all the places we needed to take care of.
preemptively just warning that, uh, in case I did misspeak, I will clarify that for you at the next.
Corrective, there is a mistake.
Suba. Police Department. Neither one of you.
Hmm, no telling actions.
Mr. Schultz, do you have anything?
I, I don't unless Supervisor Cotmore wants to, uh, write Aaron out of his will.
You're in mind. Don't worry, Aaron, after that comment.
Thanks, Sean.
Aaron just got a raise, I guess. Maybe he'd like to buy some wood.
Yeah, I'll, I'll fif- fifty-one dollars. Price of trade strategy.
No, no, you get the other two piles.
Oh, okay, deal.
Mr. Palmer, do you have anything?
Yeah, so, uh, as you know, there's, there were three major pro, there were three major projects in one event, three major projects. I just want to acknowledge, uh, Leslie, Suba, uh, Catherine, we, in the last thirty days, we took on a new payroll system. We moved the financial system to the cloud and we're redesigning the website.
Excellent.
In-house. The, the website and in-house?
The, the, the website is the, I'll call it, most of the editing is done in-house. Um, it is not, we're not done yet, but I, 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 it's been an enormous task. And I want to thank the staff that have been involved with it. I just want to publicly say thank you for that. Secondly, um, Secondly, um, pretty awesome ceremony at the Veterans, and I want to thank the team that put it all together. If anybody has not been to our Veterans Memorial, we've done some expansion to it. We've even done an enhancement on the backside where we used to have, uh, we'll just call it a, a, a pool. And is now got, it's, it's got a whole plaque of all 14 of the, uh, recognized conflicts that the country's had. It is really a very, um, very beautiful sight. So if you get a chance, it's over on Willow Mill up the street. Just, uh, just want to say thank you to everybody that worked they did there, so thank you.
I'm sorry, if I could just jump in real quick, I did have one, like, really cool thing. I wanted to recognize Nathaniel Hart. He's our park supervisor. He just got his grades in, uh, two weeks ago. He did pass a certified playground inspector course. If you don't know what that is, it's a very tough exam when it comes to inspecting playgrounds and whatnot. So I wanted to make sure I acknowledged him tonight. I had that noted, but then my mind went to the township map, so.
Meeting so we could.
Well, that's every two years, too.
Um, every three years, but they're changing that to be continuing education credits now. Uh, before you had to retake the exam, and it only has like a 65% completion rate. So, um, congratulations to Nate.
Great.
Sorry, Aaron, had to interrupt you one more time.
Laura?
I will really miss you, Aaron. Absolutely.
Thanks, yeah, I'll, I'll still be here in spirit, don't worry.
Don't charge spirits, though.
Except one place, I don't think.
I'm gonna skip Dave for comments because he's been commenting all night. Harry, it, what, what do you have to add?
Um, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. It's, it's always a, it's really great to see some of the people concerned coming out or online, except for Aaron. Aaron's out of my will. Sorry, Aaron.
Yeah, it's all right.
You get the tricycle. That's all you get.
Deal.
Um, I'd like to thank Scott, uh, for those individuals that don't come to the planning commission. Scott really offers, um, his insight on things. So I want to thank Scott for, uh, being there and offering his insight on what needs to be done, what does need to be done. So, um, Aaron, I regret talking to your boss about, what was it, seven years ago? I regret saying to your boss, face-to-face, he is great. We love him at the township. That's why I want his number to call him back, to tell him I love him. I will miss you.
Yeah, thank you, Harry.
Dave, 30 seconds.
Do quick things. Um, I talked to a resident this week, and Chief, or Dave, you might know about this. He said in the last six months, his vehicle actually got driven over by a truck at the turn at Grove Drive on State. We need to keep pushing on that. It, it actually, I guess, totaled his truck. He was sitting there at the stop sign, and the truck came around, and they, he drove the vehicle up, the truck up over his vehicle and totaled it. So, um, I, I mean, we need to keep that, you know, either with our state representative or budget time, be mindful. We, we can't afford to, you know, to wait on some of these projects and maybe lean on our state reps to try to help, even if we split the, the cost sharing. Um, the second thing is, um, we still have recourse up at the hemp property for Fry, like Fry Drive. I would like to see that become township maintained and controlled and DAP. Because as that builds out in there, and as Costco gets done, if we have an accident from the roundabout at Fry Drive out to the Pike, we have a serious issue compared if we have control that we can divert traffic onto, uh, Fry and get it to DAP to give us a way around. Is it Sean or Aaron, whoever, we, can we still leverage that as, on that site?
I'm not sure what legal options we have to get it, but other than saying that, I'm sure that if we wanted to, there are avenues for it.
I, I mean, you always have eminent domain. I think that's the most I've said eminent domain.
I know.
But you always have, have that as a fallback to everything else.
But I mean, if, if you deal with the developer there, I, I think it's in the township's best interest because it creates an issue for emergency personnel.
But Fry Drive is not, it doesn't have any.
It's private.
It will. It'll tie into DAP when they construct, when that comes across. So, uh, from DAP back to the warehouse, you let it private, but that L, that gives us an avenue to get vehi, vehicle or traffic around, and it's probably going to occur anyhow as we get more and more traffic in that area of the township. So I think it, it behooves us to try to work that now.
They may, they may be happy to just dedicate that. I mean, who, who wants to maintain a road?
If I were the developer, I'd give it away.
Can we, if you guys have the opportunity, that's all I had.
Thank you all for sitting through this. You deserve medals and, and come back again in a month.
Can I bother you for your time for a minute, please?
Sure.
On behalf of the industry that I've been raised in, the interaction earlier.
And who, I'm sorry, who you are?
I'm Andy with HJ Towing.
Okay.
Andy Ryder, I'm sorry. The interaction we had earlier, uh, while I understand that Sam's business is impacted by this, uh, I think it could have been handled better. I apologize on behalf of the industry and Sam, uh, it could have been handled.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. And with that, I will, uh, is there anybody opposed to, call it quits. Good night.